All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvening from closed session. And by a vote of 5-0 of the City Council, we've authorized the City Attorney to initiate litigation. The names of the defense and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. That being the case, I want to adjourn the closed session. Want to call to order the regular City Council meeting at 6:09 PM. And Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, July 28th at 1:00 PM, and Monday, July 31st at 6:00 PM. This being closed caption, it will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the councils during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, if you can call the roll, please.
For the roll, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
And next item.
Take us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. We have here a number of high school students who have participated in Summer at City Hall, and I'd like to invite their representative, Abe, from Pleasant Grove High to lead a pledge.
Stand salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Take us to the moment of silence.
At the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the City Council would like to ask the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I have an agenda in front of me. Entertained motion.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Attention. And next item.
For Section 3 of the closed session, we have no closed session items. Taking us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is the presentation of the Summer at City Hall program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Abenazer Shenku, and I'm an incoming junior at Pleasant Grove High School. My interest in public service began during my freshman year of high school when I joined the Public Service Academy at my school. Over the past two years, my experience volunteering in public service led me to applying to the Summer at City Hall program. Summer at City Hall provides upcoming juniors and seniors with the opportunity to learn about local government, job shadow professionals in City Hall, listen to guest speakers, and participate in a mock City Council meeting. Over the past two weeks, we've listened to you all and other people in local and federal government give their background of who they were, what their job was like, and why they do what they do. I had the privilege to job shadow City Manager Laura Gill and learn about her efforts to better the city of Elk Grove. Again, I would like to thank her for that opportunity. Overall, Summer at City Hall provided me with an unforgettable experience that will continue to have an impact on my life as a citizen of Elk Grove.
My name is Penisha Hall, and I'm a junior at Pleasant Grove High School and a member of my school's Public Service Academy. I joined this program because I wanted to learn more about city government and what makes Elk Grove the great city that it is today. Summer at City Hall has given me an insight of all the things that make the city work and how I, as a member of the city's youth population, can get involved. This week, I had the opportunity to job shadow Jody Moreno, Elk Grove's Public Affairs and Events Coordinator. From her, I learned about all the things that...I learned about all the hard work, time, and steps that go into putting together an event for the city. I learned about contracts, bids, and advertising for events such as the upcoming multicultural
My name is Tessie Uregeni. I'm a junior at Cassunas Oaks High School, where I'm currently vice president of our Black Student Union, involved in student government and our theater program. I joined Summer at City Hall to further explore my interest in public service. I shadowed Kristin Nelson, Elk Grove's Public Affairs and Events Manager. Over the past couple of days, I gained insight on just a small part of the large role she plays here in our community. She deals with anything media-related, from updating the city's social media pages to preparing for television interviews, writing public statements, editing reports, overseeing event coordination, and so much more. Just yesterday, I accompanied her to a regional public information officers' meeting at the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, where I learned how communications officers, such as Kristin, from different organizations within the region, work together in times of crisis.
Hello, my name is Natalia Romero, and I'm also a junior at Cassunas Oaks High School. I'm a part of my school's student government as a class officer. I am also a part of the freshman orientation program known as Link Crew. I got involved in the Summer at City Hall program with the intent of further pursuing my interest in public service. I also want to learn more about the specific jobs involved in Elk Grove's local government. I had the privilege of job shadowing Lupe Marietta, who is in charge of the graphic design within the Public Affairs Department. She is the one who designs logos for all departments when they put in requests, and she is also the one who creates all the visual art we see in advertisement for city events around town.
Recruitment for Summer at City Hall 2018 is beginning now. If any members of the public have a son or daughter interested in learning more about city government and careers in public service, you can see Mr. Garcia. Thank you, council, for your continued support of the Summer at City Hall program.
Great job.
I just want to say, you know, thank you for stepping up and your willingness to learn about public service, and the opportunity that I had to speak in front of you was my honor, and, you know, thank you, Mr. Garcia, for continuing this. And thank you to Karen and your crew for continuing to host these students. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that, that I don't think you guys fully understand what we get out of coming to see what you guys are doing and the quality of the young men and women we have here in Elk Grove to take their time off during the summer to take additional classes. You know, I talked to you a little bit about that when I was there. Huge opportunity for you, some excellent, excellent public speaking tonight. And this is going to take you a long way in your personal and your professional careers. And, you know, I look forward to seeing how you guys continue to develop and hopefully see one or more of you possibly sitting up here one of these days.
Go ahead, Phil.
I just want to echo those sentiments and just thank you for your interest in the city and government overall. Good luck to all of you. Hope to see you around the community.
I'll just add that I really enjoyed coming and speaking with you, but to the Vice Mayor's comments, if you're really smart, you'll aim to be sitting over there. That's where the big bucks get made. But, you know, what I really enjoyed is that after I did my spiel, and then when you start asking questions, the first couple of questions I could tell were sort of the canned questions that, you know, this is what I'm supposed to ask. But then once you started to learn a little bit about me, you tailored the questions more towards how I use my education and skills and things in the job. And so I just appreciated knowing that you were paying attention and updating your...what you wanted to ask as the time went on. So keep up the good work, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for the program.
I'm going to echo what everybody said, but, Mr. Garcia, I really appreciate you taking these young adults under your wings and guiding them through those days. But I was really impressed with the questions that they asked. They really did their homework because they knew more about me than I knew about myself. And, you know, I had brought candy because I know with young people, that's what's going to get them to ask the questions. But I think if I didn't bring the candy, they all would have still asked the questions anyways. And so I commend you all for taking the time out of your summer, like the Vice Mayor had said, and spending your time doing this. Very impressed, very, very impressed with the group.
Excellent. Keep up the good work. And next item.
Take us to Item 4.2, which is a proclamation declaring August 2017 as Cultural Diversity Awareness Month.
And we have Representative from the Multicultural Committee here. We have a proclamation we'd like to present, and I'll go ahead and read the bits and pieces of it, but more importantly, I wanted to highlight specifically, on August the 26th, in Elk Grove Regional Park is the multicultural festival in which you guys have worked so hard on, and every year it just gets bigger and bigger. This month is Cultural Diversity Awareness Month, and it is resolved by the City Council of the city of Elk Grove, which hereby proclaims the month of August 2017 as Cultural Diversity Awareness Month in the city of Elk Grove, and encourages all business entities, the media, the Elk Grove citizenry, to participate in cultural awareness events and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge, to read the council's 2016 proclamation declaring Elk Grove as no place for hate, and to take time to appreciate the ethic and cultural diversity that exists within our city. That being the case, I'm going to come down, but I'd like to invite the entire City Council to come down as well because they love to take pictures, so I don't want to do this alone.
That's because we make you look good.
Well, yeah, thank you very much to the council and the mayor for reaffirming the commitment...the city's commitment to diversity. This is the sixth year that we've had such a resolution, and it's the first time we decided to make it a month. And the reason for that was because we discovered that a week isn't enough to put on different events. It puts strain on basically the committee to do things as well as for the community. And so if we spaced it out, more things were able to happen. And we also discovered that things were happening among the...within the city, too. And for that, we actually do have our scheduled events for some of the events going on in the city for the month of August, dealing with diversity and multicultural efforts. And they're on the back table there, so we encourage everyone to grab one of those. And we also decided this year to focus on Elk Grove as being a no place for hate. There was a lot of rhetoric going on last year dealing with that, and we felt that this year we take that one step further, make this a month, and continue to celebrate our diversity at our multicultural festival. And so, yeah, we encourage all residents to try something new, to learn about a different culture, and join us on the Fourth Saturday in August for our multicultural festival. Thank you.
Would you like to have something to add?
No. I'm a very supportive member.
That's terrific.
And he's in charge. For now.
Thank you so much for the hard work. Yeah, I appreciate it. Looking forward to the festival. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 5, Public Comment.
And we have one speaker, Brian Cooley, our first and our last. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brian Cooley with Cooley &amp; Associates Development Consulting. I just came tonight to basically talk about...there was a request by council the last meeting for the city's affordable housing policy to be brought back at a subsequent council meeting, and I see it's not on the agenda tonight. I see you have a pretty packed agenda, and we just wanted to ask staff and council when you thought it might come forward, and would it be the budget policy or the policy itself that may come forward back in a form to the council?
So Laura, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Cooley, for those comments. We talked about with staff, I think it's on schedule to come back to us on August 23rd, that council meeting. My clarification, Laura, is is a RFP going to come with that one as well?
We'll have an RFP that can be released upon the conclusion of the conversation with the council on the affordable housing policy. So we'll have all that teed up and ready to go once you make that...once you all have that conversation and make the call.
Okay, and you just made me think of something. So does that RFP need to go, or should it go to the committee first before it comes to the council?
I don't remember what the protocol is, but if it is the same that it has, you know, if you keep the same policy that we've been using, then we may not need to. If...wait a minute, you know what? Sarah just walked in.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to defer to the expert.
Okay.
So we have not taken the full RFP to the council in the past before it's been released, but on August 23rd, we are planning to come back with some of the strategy, which would include the points categories for the RFP, any special categories, and how much weight you want to assign them. The rest of the RFP template is fairly standard city language, and so I don't know if it's necessary that the whole thing come before you, but we want to give you the opportunity to weigh in on how the scoring would be evaluated.
Okay, then, hearing that, I'm wondering, and I'll look at Councilman Hume if he agrees, but I think it might be better if we...the committee take a look at it quick before it comes to the council. So I don't know if you have enough time to schedule it. Can we pull this together?
In terms of getting a committee meeting scheduled and then getting it on the council agenda, there probably...we would probably need to look at bringing it to the council in September at that point.
Oh, okay. Well, then, okay, well, they'll just...we'll just look at it all in August then, together. Okay, thank you.
And my only response to that would be, you know, for affordable housing developers that are trying to compete in the 2018 rounds, the sooner we get it to the council for discussion to ultimately release the RFP would be the best. And the other thing I wanted to add is we did have a great stakeholder meeting on the 19th last week. It was pretty well attended by affordable housing developers and landowners and other stakeholders, and I wanted to applaud staff and council for giving us that opportunity to provide some feedback in terms of the city's direction going forward. But if it does come back next meeting, that probably would be preferred to wait into September because, you know, these things get competitive with other cities in the region, and the sooner we can get in the round, the better, so.
Yeah, to make that March, our first March funding opportunity, yep.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional speakers signed up to speak, next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Mayor and councilmembers, first, I'd like to announce the retirement of K-9 Blue. The police department retired K-9 Officer Blue from service last week. Blue was shot during the Jamba Juice armed robbery last January. While he was physically able to return to work, he was ultimately unable to overcome what appeared to be psychological issues associated with the shooting incident. Blue will now become the officer's family pet. Secondly, the 30th showing of the Elk Grove Strauss Festival will take to the stage beginning Thursday and extending with nightly performances through the weekend. A special check presentation by the City Council is scheduled on Friday evening as a part of the city's event sponsorship. The promenade starts at 7:30 PM, and the show begins at 8:15 PM. Parking is $10. You can call 714-2527, email info@straussfestival.com, or visit straussfestival.com if folks would like to receive more information. Also, Public Works Department crews will be installing a prefabricated steel bridge on the Laguna Creek Trail near Camden Lake this Friday. The install will use a large crane to hoist the bridge into position as a part of a project extending the multi-use trail from Camden Park to Bond Road. Additional details on this project can be found in the Public Works section of the city's website. Also, PG&E will be repainting transmission towers in Elk Grove with a non-lead-based paint beginning next week. Their team is conducting outreach to all property owners with a tower on their property by letter and with phone calls, and canvassing neighborhoods to inform those in proximity to the towers about the work that will be taking place. Customers can call 888-208-6010, email towers@pgne.com, or visit www.pge.com/towers for more information. Also, Sacramento County Voter Registration and Elections is looking for volunteer committee members to serve on the Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee, a county-wide advisory committee of disability advocates and elections experts. Members may review a new voting system, suggest improvements to vote centers and procedures, and provide feedback on other matters relating to voting activities and the Americans with Disabilities Act. All interested voters, advocates, and organizations are welcome to attend and participate in meetings scheduled during the month of August. The first meeting will be held at the Sacramento County Administration Building on August 1st. The second meeting will be held here in the council chambers on August 16th at 6:00 o'clock. For more information, contact Jose Ferreras at 916-875-5854, or by email voter-outreach@satcounty.net. Also, the city is currently in the process of conducting community outreach as a part of the multimodal facility feasibility study project. A community open house will be held on Wednesday, August 2nd, in the city council chambers from 6:00 to 7:30 PM to discuss the study in greater detail. Additional project information and an online questionnaire can also be found on the city's website. A reminder that the Elk Grove Police Department and the Cassunas Fire Department would join responders in cities throughout the country on August 1st, next Tuesday, in recognizing National Night Out as a way to strengthen neighborhoods and prevent crime. Officers will visit gatherings scheduled throughout the city. For a listing of scheduled National Night Out events in the city, please contact the Crime Prevention Unit at 478-8122, or crimeprevention@elkropd.org. Just as a personal note, this is one of my favorite nights of the year because I go to neighborhoods and ask the age-old question, "How are we doing?" And we get really good feedback out of those conversations every year. Also, the city and town planner calendar are hosting a photo contest on Instagram. Submit your best shot taken within the city using the hashtag EGtownplanner18 by August 18th. See official contest rules and details on our city's website, elkgrovecity.org/contest. Moving to the citywide initiatives update, with the Railroad Avenue property in Old Town, work on the restroom building is substantially complete with only minor punch list items remaining. Landscaping of aluminum troughs will begin on the 24th, and all work is scheduled for completion on or before August 2nd. Moving to the multi-sport park complex, we note that staff continues to work with LAFCO on the SOI annexation process and anticipates a draft environmental impact report being released later this year. And with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, any questions? No questions. And I just checked with the members of the community in the Florence and Green shirt. You did want to speak real briefly, and I see that there is a piece of document in front of me. I assume that that was provided for the remainder of the council as well?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, we only...a little bit of confusion about how we were going to present this tonight. But, yeah, we would like the other copies to go to members of the council. And I'm sorry about the confusion, but my name is Mike Bedee, and I live at 9435 Butterfly Lane in Elk Grove, which is part of the Triangle area. We'll make this quick. We know it's a very full agenda tonight. The members of the residents of the Triangle area are here, as you can see, bright green, in triangles to show their support for our cause tonight. We are here tonight to ask the city council to consider allowing further discussion regarding the rezoning of the Triangle area as being proposed through the city general plan update. An outline of our concerns and requests has been provided to the clerk, I hope we provided to the clerk, to be entered into record. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, or we've discussed this, I know, with the members of the council extensively. So what we're asking tonight is to reconsider our request, to look at this again, to allow us an opportunity to get some public...more public input into the draft plan before we can move on and get into a finalized plan. We're here to promote the special planning area for the Triangle area, the one that we've developed almost 13 years ago. Councilman Hume was very much involved with that, and we think there's still...it's still relevant to what's happening in our community, and we hope that you feel the same thing. So without further ado, and a bright shirt to show off that we all support where we're going and trying to keep it green in the Triangle area, so I'd leave it at that and hope you see it our way as well. Thank you very much.
Mike, I have it down to bring up under future agenda items under my council comments, and so that's when we'll actually address it and take the temperature of the council.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're confused. We're just poor farmers.
That's okay. Overkill works better sometimes.
Maybe so. Thank you again for your consideration.
Well, I have to say, the shirts did draw some attention, so I noticed that you didn't sign up, and I thought, I believe you wanted to make a statement, so.
Well, I appreciate you stepping forward and helping us with that.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, folks. All right, now let's move to the next item, which is council report. Let's start with Councilman Soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended the monthly American Leadership Forum, had a chance to speak to our Summer at City Hall students, and that was, as we mentioned earlier, was quite an exciting time seeing our youth engaged in the community and learning about government. Attended the Assemblymember Cooper's Town Hall here in the council chambers. That was very informative, seeing all the different...and we deal with a lot of issues up here at the city level, but seeing a lot of...or hearing about a lot of different issues that the Assemblyman's dealing with, namely things like dialysis, you know, it's not something that we deal with at the city level. And then, as mentioned earlier as well, the affordable housing, we had an outreach session here in the community with affordable housing developers explaining our new tool that we're adding as a city. And then finally, attended last weekend with...saw Councilman Detrick there, Vice Mayor Detrick there, the Summer Fest to...as a fundraiser for the Running for Rett Foundation. It was a nice event as well. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Nguyen.
I attended my Juvenile Justice Commission meeting. Subsequently, right after that was the Delinquency Prevention Council. I had the opportunity to sit down with several members of the Triangular Area Community Group, which I see out there. At the same token, I also had a chance to meet with members of the Park Gate community. Also spoke at Summer at City Hall, and tomorrow I've got the Sacramento Public Library meeting.
Excellent. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been busy. I attended the Chamber Mixer at PDF Realty. It was a good turnout. I also attended Assemblymember Cooper's Town Hall meeting. It was a very lively discussion, and I think he did a good job of addressing a variety of issues. I also sat down with some representatives from the Triangle area, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Also attended the affordable housing outreach meeting that I thought went very well, and there was some pretty good dialogue and understanding of steps moving forward. Spoke at the Summer at City Hall, as was mentioned earlier. Had RT Monday night, which, nothing of Elk Grove importance, but I will say that we had a very positive financial report delivered by our acting Director of Finance, and it's just nice to see things kind of change and turned around at RT. I think, you know, we still have a ways to go, namely figuring out how we're going to pay to replace the lifed-out light rail cars, but it's a different place over there now. It's good to see. The mayor and I were at the Regional Sanitation Board District this morning. Nothing necessarily to report out, except that we did, on the consent calendar, approve what will be Item 10.7 on tonight's agenda. Had a meeting this afternoon with Councilmember Nguyen and members of staff to go over the scope of the RFP for the diversity audit. That went very well, and that progress is on track to be the timeline that we had advertised. Then had an audit committee meeting with the Vice Mayor, and they had pretty solid reviews of our Public Works Department Operations and Maintenance Division, and so I want to congratulate Bob Murdock for a department that is being run very well. They were very impressed with our response times to complaints. And then Friday, 12:30, Sacramento City Hall. I will be attending the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting there. A couple of things of import to mention that hopefully if you want to come out and voice your support for it, it would be talking about the expansion plan service to Sacramento. And the other thing is a TIRC, which stands for Transit and Intercenty Rail Capital Program Grant Request, which will include funding for an Elk Grove platform. So we're getting closer to making, bringing heavy passenger rail to Elk Grove a reality. And so it's a very...I actually changed some travel plans so that I could be at that meeting and show my support. As far as... As far as future agenda items, I want to thank staff for getting the duck crossing signs up. It's been a very positive response of that little girl's story and what an impact she was able to make. But some people, you know, like to invite the opportunity to criticize, and so there was a gentleman who said the city was more concerned with ducks crossing the road than with people crossing the road, because he has been trying to get a crosswalk at Plaza Park and Elk Grove Florin Road. I actually did a little visual survey of the physical environment, and there are several crosswalks down by the high school and by the park. There's a signalized one up in the commercial area, but this stretch of road where Plaza Park is, there is not one. So I would like to see the feasibility of adding a crosswalk there. And then, as was mentioned by Mr. Padilla, the Triangle folks feel that when, as a part of our general plan joint session process, that we made pretty drastic changes to a longstanding document in one fell swoop without a lot of opportunity for public input, and so they would like to see one more circle back on that and see if they can add their two cents as to what they'd like to see and what they wouldn't like to see. So I'm asking whether or not council would be amenable to bringing back that for another discussion.
I would support that.
Yeah, I would definitely support that, but I would add that another, one of the other property owners from what we were looking at from the general plan update has also requested a reexamination, and so if we do for one, I'd just say, let's just do it for both of them and bring them both back. That's the property adjacent over to the northwest of this, huh?
Campbell Road area.
Campbell Road area, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So just bring them both back and.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Do, question, do we want to make this another joint meeting, or just handle, have council handle it?
When's our next joint meeting, Christopher?
We didn't have one planned at this point. Essentially, the strategy is we're working on the documentation now and plan to release it after the first of the year as a complete document, so if you did want to make changes, now's the time to do it. So I think unless John had any thoughts, we could do it, I think, either way.
Is there any legal requirement that we have to have a joint?
No, it's fine. You can do it at the council level.
I'm fine with council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with you folks as well, so I'm probably, God's probably, I think, been two months ago, and, you know, I like your perseverance, and obviously your colors were very bright, caught our attention for sure. So I look forward to hearing the debate as we move forward on this. Had the opportunity to fill in for the mayor on a radio show, and they came to Elk Grove. They've been going around the road around the region. It's 106.5, the end, wake up. And they came down to, outside the McDonald's on Sheldon Road, and it was great to be able to give the city of Elk Grove a plug, and, you know, one of the questions they asked were tying back into what are some of the major things going on. Talked about the Aquatic Center and the Veterans Hall and Senior Center that's going in next year. So just, you know, some of the key items. But one of the interesting things that I've never had an opportunity to before is actually presented a certificate of recognition to one of the radio hosts that was coordinated by Jason. Thank you for doing that, Jason. And Kristen, I think, had her fingers in there too, as our public information officer. But the young man, Kevin Huen, which I don't know if he's, is he in relation to Stephanie? Kevin Huen? Huen is like Smith?
Yes.
Yeah. So, but this young man, you couldn't see, obviously he was on radio, so you couldn't see the excitement because he was totally surprised by it, and did this live in front of his whole crew on the radio, and so it was pretty heartwarming to be able to present a certificate of recognition to a young man from Elk Grove who works for this radio station, who's also back, going back to his high school days and currently very active in the community, so. And then followed up that same evening with Councilmember Soon, our former fire chief of CSD, Chief Hanson, had a retirement party, and there was probably 200 people there.
Yeah.
It's a big turnout. I think we were two of the only ones that weren't firemen, but it was, and I think where there was probably 90% of them were retired. So they get, it was a great, great experience to hear all the testimony from, not only the people from here in Elk Grove, the Sacramento region, but throughout the state of California, with all that Tracy has been able to do to touch people. And I kind of shared the story, one of the most touching things, one of the chiefs from Southern California came up, and his main reason for his tie, I thought he was going to actually tear up, which I wouldn't blame him, is he lost his 20-year-old son in an accident, and Tracy and some of the other chiefs around the area went down to the memorial to, for support for one of their colleagues. And that just gives you testimony of the type of person that Tracy is and what she gave, both personally and professionally. So it was a great send-off.
In addition to playing the drums.
Yes, yes, phenomenal. She's part of the drug and bagpipe team.
Bagpipes, yeah.
So she, you know, she was wheeling some pretty mean, some pretty mean sticks there. And then we also gave her a certificate of recognition from the city of Elk Grove. Both of these certificates were signed by the entire city council. Also had a chance to speak at the Summer at City Hall that we've talked about. It's always a pleasure serving as the chair for the Cable Commission to come back to the city, that we actually are able to bring money into the city coffers instead of taking it out. And so the actuals for this year is $1,398,000. So pretty, excuse me, $1,398,000. So almost $1.4 million for the 2016-17 will be netted to the city, and the proposed, after we passed the budget at the last meeting, is almost $1.3 million will be proposed next year. The fees are dropping down partially because of all the wireless communications that don't pay those franchise fees. As was mentioned, went to the inaugural of the Summer Fest in Elk Grove Park, and it was a great setting. As everybody knows, Elk Grove Park is a beautiful facility, but they nestled it amongst a group of oak trees so that it was one of the 100-plus degree days, so it was nice to have some shade with the whole venue circled with all the vendors and a nice country-western band playing, and everybody who went out there looked like they were having a great time. And, let's see. And as was mentioned, the Public Works Audit, and all did, oh, Bob, great, great work by you and your team, and obviously John Scott, and now Shane's be able to take the ball and run with it, keep up the good work, and as was mentioned, anything we can do to help you, within reason, we'll do what we can to help with all the public work items, as well as was mentioned at the last meeting with our PD. You guys are, you affect the quality of life more than anything else we do, so we're 100% behind you. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. I only want to mention events or meetings that wasn't mentioned earlier, so let's just start with the City Council 2x2. The air quality is due for tomorrow, and the event which I like to highlight is the Elk Fest, which continues to run at Morse Park. In this past weekend, there was about 1,000 participants out there. So aside from that, we're trying to keep busy, and that is it for me.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just put a bow on what we did here so that the folks in Green can choose whether they want to stay at the meeting or go. We'll be having a discussion at a future council meeting, and I'll certainly keep you posted as to when that'll be.
Thank you for coming out, folks. Appreciate it. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Okay, want to open for public comment, seeing nobody sign up to speak. Want to close public comment, council deliberation and/or motion?
Move the agenda, I mean, consent items, excuse me.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstention? Next item.
That'll take us to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider appeal of Planning Commission project denial for Blue Wave Car Wash, minor design review and conditional use permit at the location of 9660 East Stockton
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. Before you this evening is an appeal of the Blue Wave Car Wash. An appeal for, just a reminder, is a de novo hearing, which means it's a whole, brand-new hearing. So as part of tonight's agenda, I will present to you the appeal portion and then briefly go over the entitlements that are being requested. The council can either reverse, modify, or affirm what the Planning Commission's decision was. In this case, the Planning Commission denied the Blue Wave appeal application. So just a little bit of background on the overall site, is that it was previously used as a Caltrans maintenance yard, and over the years that's changed, and the maintenance buildings have been removed. In 2008, a project was approved for the site that's known as Reynolds and Brown or Elk Grove Plaza Phase 3, and that redesigned the site as commercial. It involved, and I'll show you the site plan on the next slide, but it involved a 98-room hotel as well as some retail pad sites. As part of that approval, there was an EIR done and an MRP. Before you on the screen is that previously approved site plan. These entitlements are still intact on this site. It included the parcel map for four parcels, the hotel site, and the future retail. At the June 1st Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission expressed several concerns, one being traffic congestion at peak hours, cars blocking and or backing up the entrance to the site, as well as the freeway on-ramp, and the impact that the Dutch Brothers coffee potentially has on this site and adding in an additional drive-through operation. At the meeting, it was also discussed about providing an interim loop design that could ultimately be part of the overall approval of the site, and it would reconfigure how Dutch Brothers queuing was going through the site, which would eliminate some of the congestion and the queuing. After consideration of all the information that was presented, the Planning Commission did deny the project 4 to 0, and there was one Planning Commissioner absent. In terms of the appellant's request, they are requesting two specific items. One, that the city council reexamined some of the off-site traffic concerns that were raised, the other being to reconsider the project approval. So as part of the appeal, there was some additional information that was submitted by the appellant, the first being some technical memorandums that were submitted that basically went over what was previously approved in 2008 as part of that draft EIR, those commercial trips that were generated, potential chip generation characteristics of the Elk Grove Plaza 3 and its current proposal, some chip, trip generation characteristics of Dutch Brothers, and consideration of how that all comes into play when we talk about internal trips and pass-by trips. The appellant has also provided some revised queuing and looping system for Dutch Brothers and some renderings, which I will show you. So in terms of the 2008 draft EIR for Elk Grove Plaza 3 versus this proposal that's before you tonight, the 2008 EIR analyzed two different alternatives. Alternative 1 included a hotel, a turnover restaurant, a gas station with a market, and a car wash. Those trips came out to 286 a.m. trips and 317 p.m. trips. Alternative 2, which was analyzed in that EIR, and you can see before you on the screen, was a retail, some fast food, and a gas station, generated 344 a.m. trips and 403 p.m. trips. So when we talk about the scenario in today's terms, with a car wash, some future fast-food pad sites, and a retail site, that's generating 341 a.m. trips and 303 p.m. trips. So as you can see, that scenario is less of an impact than alternative 2, which was previously analyzed in that 2008 EIR. In terms of the Dutch Brothers coffee, initially back in 2009, when the EIR was done for the interchange improvements, it wasn't known at that time that Dutch Brothers would be happening on that site, so that particular parcel was analyzed as general commercial. So based on some standard modeling assumptions that would have been done, so on about a half-acre parcel, we're looking at a 5,400-square-foot building, which is about 26 a.m. trips and 85 p.m. trips. So Dutch Brothers itself generates 179 a.m. trips and 160 p.m. trips. So that's an increase from what was previously looked at in that EIR. In terms of the revisions that are being proposed for the Dutch Brothers queuing system, which will help relieve that congestion, eliminate the backup that may be occurring onto East Stockton Boulevard, what the applicant is proposing to do as part of the overall improvements of the site is to modify this whole intersection. So if you're familiar with the site right now, cars come in and they immediately go this way into a queue to order and pick up their coffee. They come back out and around, stop here, and they exit the site. So what this configuration will do is it will have two lanes ultimately that will come into the site. We'll have a through lane that will go to the back of the site for the Blue Wave Car Wash. We will have a lane that will loop around for queuing for the Dutch Brothers site, where they will come up here, get their coffee, and be able to then come back around and exit the site. There's proposed to be a stop bar at this location and a stop bar at this location. That way you don't have competing traffic patterns, and that everybody can stop and adequately see the traffic that's either coming in and flowing through or exiting the site. So this queuing right here can hold approximately, and I can let the applicant speak to that in more detail, but it's probably about 30 cars that this particular queue can hold. The applicant's provided some renderings of how this will now look. So as you can see in the back of the property, this is the proposed Blue Wave, just the new configuration of how this system will work with the two through lanes and one exit lane. This is just a closer look at that overall traffic pattern, and then a view from the I'm going to briefly go through the entitlements that are being requested. In terms of the project, they're asking for a minor design review and a conditional use permit to operate the car wash. As I said, the project's located at 9660 East Stockton Boulevard. They're proposing to provide access driveways, internal improvements, provide improvements for the Dutch Brothers queuing. They're requesting deviations for height and landscaping. Just another look at the overall site plan, there will be reciprocal access condition for, between these parcels, to be able to move about the site. Blue Wave Car Wash site, as they would come in, they're going to loop around and place their order and come through the actual, sorry, the actual car wash area, or they can bypass that completely. They can go in here and use the vacuums. They do not have to purchase a car wash to utilize the vacuum stalls, which are located right here. There's some additional parking here throughout the site, which could be utilized by Blue Wave or future tenants. For design review deviations, they're requesting a deviation from height due to the adjacent open space zoning. They're also requesting some landscape deviations for their landscape islands. If they are required to insert these landscape islands, it will impact the canopy for the vacuum system and have to reconfigure the entire site. These are the elevations before you on the screen. In terms of the conditional use permit, it does require a CUP to operate the actual car wash facility. Hours of operation are between 7 a.m. and 9 p.m. The vacuums will be turned off when they are closed, and there's a condition for them to put a gate across so that it addresses police concerns about safety getting back into that back part of the parcel. When the Planning Commission reviewed this project, they did not have any concerns, nor did they express any concerns regarding the entitlements requested, the deviations that are requested, and did not have any issues in terms of the overall design of the elevations itself. In terms of environmental analysis, this project is exempt from CEQA, and the recommendation before you tonight is to adopt a resolution to grant the appeal by the appellant, which would overturn the Planning Commission's denial of the project, and then in turn approving the Blue Wash, Blue Wave Car Wash project. I can answer questions you may have. I know the applicant appellate team is here, other city staff is here to answer more technical questions on the traffic. Other city staff is here to answer more technical questions on the traffic.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Darcy, thanks for the presentation, and thanks for all your work here at the city, too. So wanted to ask a couple of things. One, can you clarify or highlight the fencing that's going to be provided around the cemetery site for the site plan? And secondly, for the remaining parcel, although we don't have any specific use at this time, but are you able to address, or maybe the applicant can address, the intention of maintaining any queuing from those uses on that particular parcel?
Sure. So the applicant is proposing to fence off, provide the additional fencing in between the cemetery and their project site. In terms of what additional would occur on the site, I would leave that to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Darcy, I need a little clarification. I've looked both back in the TJKM report as well as the, I believe this references, I don't know that it has a table number, but anyway, with respect to the a.m. and p.m. peak trip generations. And I'm just curious, looking at the Dutch Brothers 179 a.m. and 160 p.m. peak hour, but then when I look at the net new trips in the table, it's only 19 and 17. And when I look at the Table 7 in the report, it's showing the pass-by reduction. And so is that assuming that somebody that's already coming to the site will be one of those peak trips to go to Dutch Brothers, and so therefore, Dutch Brothers isn't creating that peak trip?
So I would probably defer that technical question to the traffic engineers to explain the details about how pass-by trips are figured into that calculation.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. All right. This point would declare a public hearing open. I would like to invite the applicant to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. My name is Drew Mickel, and I represent the owners of the property located at 9660 East Stockton Boulevard. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and present the project tonight. Appreciate it. I also want to thank you for your time individually, sitting down and focusing on some of the nuances of the project. I appreciate that. I know you have busy schedules. And lastly, I want to thank staff. Councilman Soon mentioned it, but Darcy and staff have done a great job, put a lot of time in, and I really appreciate their effort in the comprehensive staff report that was done. Tonight, I'm really excited to bring a project forward to you. It's been a bit of a long run, as some of you may know. This is a location that we're really looking forward to improving. We purchased this property back in 2006, and prior to the purchase, we sat down with staff and tried to understand what they envisioned for the site. Talked about some commercial uses, community-serving commercial uses, and so forth. We went through a two-year process, studied the site exhaustively, as it was owned by Caltrans, so we really need to understand the different dynamics of the site and what was done previously. And back in 2008, we received unanimous council approval to modify the land use designation for the site from RD5 quasi-public to commercial. Immediately after the approvals, there was a huge downturn in the market, as I'm sure you're aware. And we've been focused on marketing the site diligently for the past nine years and have not had a user that's justified sort of uses that we envisioned for the site, and I know that council envisioned for the site, until now. So we're really excited to have an opportunity to bring Blue Wave forward and a use that will help us move the site forward. Between the approval time and now, I think you all are aware of the Dutch Brothers that went on the adjacent parcel. That was not part of this project, but it went on the adjacent parcel. Dutch Brothers is thriving, as we all can see, which is great from a business perspective, but it really created some unanticipated, and from our perspective, unacceptable circulation challenges for both the residents on the public right-of-way but also on our own site. So we're looking forward to solving that problem, which this approval tonight, if we're so deemed, would allow us to do. So tonight, again, we're looking at presenting a use permit for Blue Wave. They're a great tenant, and we are excited to bring them forward. And we have a representative, Joseph Mahah, who's going to speak on their behalf. We're also, again, really excited to present an opportunity and a solution to a traffic challenge on the site. We brought our traffic engineer, Todd Tregenza, to give a bit more detail on the traffic component. But again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. My name's Todd Tregenza. I'm a transportation planner with TJKM Transportation Consultants. The landowner hired us to take a look at onsite, offsite circulation issues, concerns related to Dutch Brothers as they relate to further development of the site, specifically Blue Wave. I think early on, we recognized the importance of solving the circulation issue that's observable out there, not only for the community but also for the good of the commercial development and the success of a business operation. So as you can see on the screen, the solution we came up with, we went through numerous revisions, permutations of it. We believe we've arrived at an optimal solution that both handles the Dutch Brothers traffic that's out there today and allows for further development of the site. And we accomplished this through a couple of things. The first thing is we moved the onsite intersection deeper onsite. And so we removed that short stacking distance between the Dutch Brothers intersection and the main, East Stockton, main line. Doing this does a couple of things. It eliminates a conflict zone adjacent to the street. It also provides additional stacking if the provided storage capacity is not sufficient. Based on our site visits during peak hours, we observed about 15 to 17 vehicles as kind of the max queue. We accommodate up to 35 when you include the dedicated entry lane for Dutch Brothers. Just between the turnaround area and the stand itself, we have about 20 vehicles accommodated, which exceeds the maximum queue we observed. So we more than doubled the stacking capacity with the site plan. We provide a dedicated through lane that allows vehicles going to Blue Wave to bypass any traffic that would, under a worst-case condition, stack beyond that entrance to Dutch Brothers. We also looked at offsite improvements. So we have a do-not-block striping plan presented on East Stockton itself. That will allow vehicles to continue to enter the site from the left turn lane as well as ensure safe access and circulation under any queuing conditions that are on the main line of East Stockton itself. So we believe that's a safety benefit. We also, as I mentioned before, eliminate the conflicts at the driveway, which cause some driver confusion. If you're out there during peak conditions right now, it can be kind of a mess during the busiest of times. So we believe this plan is an optimal solution to the present condition and will improve the organization and safety of that condition.
Hold on, Todd. Before you walk away, can you answer my question with respect to net new trips?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right, absolutely. So pass-by trips are trips, so we want to differentiate between net new trips to the transportation system from trips observed at the driveway. So Dutch Brothers trip generation was observed to be 179 trips at the driveway. However, based on industry surveys of similar uses nationwide as well as a review of some traffic studies, Dutch Brothers sites within California, the pass-by percentage is to basically discount the trips that are stopping along a pre-existing trip. So they're on their way to work, on their way back home, on their way to another destination. That's a pass-by component. The internal trip component is something that will be observed once additional development occurs onsite, and those are trips that are satisfied without leaving the site at all. So folks that are at the car wash will go grab a coffee and vice versa. That's a much smaller component of the trip generation characteristics than the pass-by. Fast food, coffees, all those uses, especially with drive-throughs, typically have a lot of pass-by traffic, so.
So kind of, sorry, to break that down into layman's terms, then, you're saying out of the 179 a.m. trips, that only 19 of those would be people that wouldn't be driving that route to begin with?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I understand it now. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Soon?
Yeah, so to my question earlier about the remaining parcel, so, and first of all, I want to commend you in this solution to address the queuing on here. But when this last parcel gets built out, where would the queuing, would it bleed out into this travel lane here? Or is there room to accommodate that onsite there? Hi, Drew.
Hi. I'll answer that one. So we're going to have each, each tenant will circulate on their own site. So any stacking will be contained on their own parcel. The main road that you see are the access road going along the property line, east-west path, is really a spine road. So it serves as an entry point, and then once you turn in, will make curb cuts as appropriate. Once you turn into those sites, those will be contained on their own parcels.
So the queuing is going to occur on there. It's not going to be backed up onto the spine, if you will?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well.
Another question.
Where you show on the screen there, the two red lines that break, is that like a fire access? And what is that actually made of?
Those are mountable curbs that the fire department mandates.
Okay.
Drew, you and I had a conversation. One of the things that I was concerned about is on an annual basis, there's a veterans' walk that takes place there, and there's a ceremony that takes place there. I'm concerned that the number of people that actually come and the access to the cemetery. And so you have put something on the table in regards to building a walk strip from the parked cars up on the, I guess, left, the top-left of where the cars are parked, to the gate, in which you were suggesting, and we can barely see it now. It doesn't show as a gate that's openable. But is that something that you guys would be committed to?
So we've worked well with the neighboring cemetery and provided them access for all the years that we've owned it and will continue to do so. We've been speaking with them about it. We can explore, it doesn't show it on this rendering, but we can certainly explore widening and creating some sort of walkway that will get over that gate. That gate is functioning, so they open it up whenever they need to. I actually don't even have keys.
Yeah, I was particularly interested in something that would be paved so that the participants can actually know where to walk as opposed to walking over the grass or walking in the streets to that gate. Because by visual, I can see that the cars are going to be driving right by the gate, right?
They will, but I think we can, in that landscape area, just to the, towards the cemetery next to the car, you see, we can create some sort of pathway there that is protected and out of the traffic pattern.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is, this is a revision from what actually went before the planning commissioners. Is that correct?
It is. It is. So there were some concerns raised at Planning Commission. So we came back and sort of challenged a team and said, is this, have we looked at every possible solution? And the team came up with what we believe, and with staff's help, a better solution that provides a bit more circulation and stacking onsite and really brings cars deeper into the site without any sort of conflict as you come out.
As a measuring tool, the rendering that went before the planning commission, what was the number of cars in terms of stacking compared to this?
The max cars was 20 cars, and this allows for 30 to 35.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. I don't see the full image of this here, but how many parking spaces are there along that fence that is adjacent to the cemetery?
25.
25. And then how many employees would you have working for the Blue Wave Car Wash? Because I would assume they would be parking there as well, too, right? There are cars there.
They'll be parking on their own site, actually, so on their site plan it's shown.
Just because my concern is that if there were events that were happening at the cemetery, and I think we had this conversation already, and the issue was that there just wasn't enough parking, and then in exiting, the traffic to just get out of there would be folks that were exiting from, exiting from Dutch Brothers, and then you've got folks exiting from the car wash. And then anybody that's attending an event that's at the cemetery, I could see that also being an issue with the traffic. And there's only one lane to get out of there.
So when we designed the site and set the driveway location, that was really designed by the city. And so we're sort of locked into how wide that driveway can be. As it relates to any sort of circulation onsite, any backup for the occasional, it sounds like there's a once-a-year event, you know, we'll do our best to help accommodate that. And I think having somebody out there in that specific circumstance to manage traffic would make some sense. As it relates to onsite backup, again, it's all going to be onsite and managed that way. So I think today, the conflict you're mentioning, as you leave, we only have two lanes. There's a pinch point in the existing condition where when we put in that interim loop to address queuing for Dutch Brothers, and if you were to go into the park-and-ride, the only way out is through that Dutch Brothers interim loop. And we're simply constrained physically right now to that. This addresses that and eliminates that constraint.
Yeah, I take this road to work all the time, and the traffic is horrendous. This is, I like this new design here. I think it's going to solve a lot of the problems that happen in the morning.
Thank you. Another thing that popped into mind, what does it count on employees over at Dutch Brothers and also the car wash? I'm just trying to think whether 25 is enough, because every time I drive by Dutch Brothers, it seems like there's 100 people in there.
Dutch Brothers has eight employees.
Okay.
So we're providing stalls for them, and then I'll let, I can have Blue Wave answer the question, so they're employed.
Okay.
Drew, one of the things we talked about was not only the onsite improvements but the offsite improvements. And, you know, obviously, your proposal here is to do, keep clear. I know some of the issues are not directly responsibility of you as the developer, but one of the things we talked about is the potential, working with our Public Works and Caltrans to modify, both as you come around the corner from Elk Grove onto southbound East Stockton as well as the freeway on-ramps. And you had mentioned that you would be willing to help coordinate and at least take care of some of the striping expenses when you were doing that. But hopefully, that you can work with our staff to, if this gets approved tonight, to be able to coordinate, as we talked about in our meeting, the potential of pedestrian signals that would be green lights for people to not stop on the corner. I know that Councilwoman Soon, uh, Soon, Wen had mentioned that is an issue she sees every day. People come there and stop because they're confused on the corner. Again, I know that's not your issue, but I want to make sure it's coordinated with the project, hopefully, and on the feasibility of being looked at with two right-hand turn lanes going onto the freeway as well with restriping. So if those can be looked at in conjunction, if this gets approved, I want to make that coordinated. And anything that we can accelerate on our end, I know with Caltrans, we're limited, but possibly at least the pedestrian lights, not having people stop on that corner, I think would be a huge item as well.
Yeah, we're more than willing to, you know, look at sort of the striping component. I'll leave it to staff to speak to sort of the overall issues and how that's coordinated, because I think, you know, we're ready to move forward now, and I'm not sure of their timing and what have you. So I'll let them speak to.
Then the last item onsite to kind of address maybe the issue that was talked about with special events, one of the things that I brought up that, so each time you have a grand opening, there's going to be a lot more cars, a lot more people. That if you would get, in any major events, that you guys would be agreeable to hire a traffic control group to help coordinate the traffic on that.
I think that's a fair request, and we will certainly coordinate that with.
And I think, I think if you're going to, if you're going to offer your property to the cemetery, they could, if that event is, you're kind enough to let them come to your property, they could at least hire the traffic folks to take care of it on that one day a year.
Yeah, and I'll have the same discussion there.
Unless you want to be so gracious to do it from your team.
Appreciate that offer, but I'll speak to the neighbors.
Go ahead.
So Drew, Councilman Detch was talking about fire trucks, and I was wondering, I'm sure this turning radius accommodates this as well, but you're, when you have garbage trucks to service this area, how will they be able to access if you have a stacked? a stacked queue? Is that being considered? If you want to?
Yeah, it would be the same access as the emergency. Yeah, and I would imagine that that service would probably occur during off-peak hours, so we wouldn't anticipate the entire queue filling up. This stacking provided really addresses the worst-case scenario. I think chances of seeing that all the way filled up on a regular basis are relatively low.
Off-peak hours, so I, I mean, just because I, even the Starbucks by my house, I sometimes get stuck when they're trying to empty the bins out, because it's in the morning, and the the garbage trucks are working in the morning. So do you guys have a range for different, commercial pickups during maybe different times?
We, I can't speak to Dutch Brothers' operation as it relates to the trash, but.
Of course, sorry.
We will certainly work with them, and if it becomes an issue, we will address it and modify the times and fix whatever problem that presents.
Okay, no, that that'd be great. And then the other question I had when when we met individually as well, is your willingness to take on an extra condition about maintaining the building of the of the Blue, Blue Wave Car Wash, meaning that tenant making sure that that for the conditional use permit, that that those buildings are maintained. We had a similar car wash come before us recently, and and I asked for the same condition to be applied to them.
That's a good lead into introducing Blue Wave and just letting him give you a little little overview of the company. We've been, part of the reason we're really excited for them to come to the site is what we've seen in their other facilities. So I think, you know, from our own perspective, that's important, but I'll let them at least just say hello and introduce themselves and speak to that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, just real quickly, how many employees do you anticipate?
I'll tell you. At the most, three.
Three, okay.
Typically, two, unless the manager's in checking in.
All right, thanks.
My name is Joe Samaha. I'm with Stan Tech Consulting. We're the design engineers for the onsite portion. I'm also here representing Blue Wave. I first wanted to echo Drew's statements on thanking staff for for helping us along this process. It's been great. I did have a few remarks I wanted to pass on from Blue Wave. Blue Wave is very excited to become part of the Elk Grove community in an underserved, underutilized, and highly visible location. They're proud to bring their service to the area and are confident that the community will enjoy how easy, efficient, and environmentally friendly their service is. They're eager to bring a new, high-quality Car Wash to the site, and very much look forward to providing the highest level of service in the city. I'll be available for any other onsite questions you guys have.
Okay, questions?
So my question is, and you were obviously there when Drew and I spoke, but one of the things I'm concerned about is, over time, and these elevations look great, but over time, things deteriorate, and maintaining the quality of of those elevations, I think, is important, and it would it would send a message to folks that, you know, the maintaining the the quality of the community. So would would Blue Wave be willing to commit to that, to maintaining that quality as part of their conditional use permit?
It's actually part of our brand, is clean appearance, basically, so I would imagine so, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
They take, they take very much a pride in in their brand and how they appear to the community.
Okay, any other questions? No? Good, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to open public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment. Want to invite the applicant and the appellant back for closing statements, if you'd like. If you wanted to waive it, I think we're fine with that as well. It's up to you. You're good? Okay, all right. At this point, I want to declare a public hearing closed, and council deliberation and direction.
So I just want to, again, commend the applicant and the engineers for their willingness to address the problem that was highlighted at the planning commission. I think they came up with a solution here that that mitigates the the impacts from additional traffic from the Dutch Brothers, and that approving this project would actually help the the traffic conditions as as is caused by, or traffic concerns caused by the Dutch Brothers' use. So, and then I noticed there's a deviation about landscaping between, going from 10 spaces, our normal requirement, to 11, and that that seems pretty marginal to me, if it makes more more of an efficient site. And I noticed also from the diagram that, and I'm assuming the landscaping concept is accurate in terms of the the spacings before that landscape islands, is that is that accurate? It is, I'm seeing some nods out there. So there's only one location where you're at 11 spaces, the rest are below 10. So with that, I would I would make the motion to recommend staff's recommendation to grant the appeal with the added condition, similar to, I think, I talked about staff about this, but the language from the Quick Quack Car Wash to be added in there for the conditional use permit.
Second?
Got a second?
Mayor, members of the council, would you like me to read that condition of the record so we're clear?
Let's do that, please.
So I'll read identically what was proposed on the Quick Quack Car Wash and accepted there, and agreed as follows. The applicant shall maintain all structures and features onsite to avoid building and structure degradation, including without limitation rust or other physical decay or degradation.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, I'd like to make some comments, if I may. I just seconded the discussion. I'll try to be brief, but I want to give a little bit of background. You know, I was on the planning commission back when Caltrans ceased operations, and this is a corp yard, and Reynolds and Brown approached us about the idea of changing the zoning. The underlying zoning of the site didn't make much sense. RD5 residential and open space there at a what was then only a freeway off-ramp. And I don't remember, Vice Mayor, were you on council when they came forward with the actual project?
No.
So when they came forward with the project, we recognized as kind of an economic development opportunity for what was really an underused site. We were excited about it being a hotel. They were excited about it being a hotel, but two things happened. One, the economy took a nosedive, and the second thing is that hotel users were not excited about it being a hotel. And so they actually got dropped by their broker who specialized in hotel users. He said, that's not worth my time to pursue anymore, you guys are on your own. So while we would have preferred to see that use, they now are, were stuck with a with a site that they couldn't put that use on. But I just want to say that in addition to this being a completely new hearing from the planning commission, this was kind of to what Councilmember Sun spoke about, this is really a completely different application with respect to this circulation, and I commend you guys for for putting your heads together and coming up with a with a better solution that I think definitely improves current conditions, but also sets it up for for better success as the site continues to develop. Now I want to go back and touch on something that the Vice Mayor mentioned. I've spent a lot of time observing this site since I learned of this appeal. I don't take it every day to go to work like Councilmember Wen, but I probably use it half a dozen times throughout the day, through one of the directions of this intersection. And so I've been heavily observing it. I've noticed that Dutch Brothers occasionally backs up the queuing. When they do, they immediately get staff out there and they try and redirect as much of it onsite. But as the Vice Mayor mentioned, the biggest issue with this movement is bad drivers who don't understand what a free right turn is. And they stop because the traffic is coming the other way, even though they have no intention of merging into that other lane, and they can't anticipate that the cars coming the other way are gonna merge into them, and they sit and wait until the traffic's clear and then go. So we need to, as the Vice Mayor was saying, we need to, I would suggest, put up a green turn signal that stays green until some point that a pedestrian triggers it to turn it red, so they know to stop, or some big, don't stop unless you see a pedestrian sign. I mean, I know there's a sign that says yield for pedestrians, but something that just instructs these people, keep moving you, have a free movement all the way to to the freeway. The other thing I want to bring up is that the opening of a second Dutch Brothers, I think, will reduce some of those net new trips, because now they'll have a different location to go to. So I think the site's as bad as it's going to get right now, and every time it's improved, it will probably improve the existing condition. So I want to commend Drew and Reynolds and Brown for for sticking with a troubled site, getting creative, and really sharpening the pencil when they had to, and and coming up with a better solution.
The only thing I'd like to add is the grading that will take place, and you're gonna make that the bottom line more marketable as opposed to what it is now, so I'm excited about that. All right?
I got a comment, too.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
So again, applaud you guys for the changes that you made, because the way it was before, I would not support this project. So with the changes that you've made, I do support it. As I mentioned, my biggest concern right now is the offsite, and I know that's not your responsibility to to fix kind of some, the design that took place between Caltrans and the city, but I really want this to be a top priority. Councilman Hume stole a little of my thunder. He has a tendency to have the Paul Harvey version, but he does a great job. And but a great project, appreciate the what you guys have done to make modifications, because quite often, when there's a an appeal, people bring back the same, you know, they just basically say, go ahead and kill it at the planning commission, we'll get it pushed through a council. Well, this, I don't believe this would have got pushed through with what you guys brought to the planning commission. So good job for the efforts on that, and great job, Darcy, and the team for what you guys did on this, and so appreciate everything.
Okay, got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? Next item.
Oh, by the way, Councilmembers, Kyle from Dutch Brothers estimates at least a 30% reduction when the new place opens.
That'll take us on to item 9.2, public hearing to consider a condition of approval amendment for the Bow Street Apartments' density bonus for project located at 8627 Bow Street.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. Darcy Geller with the Planning Department. Before you this evening is a condition of approval amendment for the Bow Street Apartments' density bonus. They're requesting to modify the timing of condition of approval number five as part of their density bonus approval. This requires them to enter into an agreement with the city to ensure that the units, all 98 of them, remain as affordable units. A little bit of background, the project was initially approved by the zoning administrator in June of last year. In June of last year as well, the density bonus was approved for the project. And then just recently, last week, the planning commission approved a parcel map to split that project into two. The reasoning that they're requesting this amendment to the condition is due to changes in how the tax credit pricing works. So they needed to come up with a hybrid type of financing, so what that required was a 9% loan and a 4% loan. So that also resulted in needing to split that property into two parcels. So with that action being done, the the constraints that are now before the applicant is that the timing of this condition will delay the release of their building permits. So these agreements that have to be recorded for the site are two separate, two separate agreements, but they pretty much say the same thing for each parcel. The agreement for one of the parcels has already been recorded. The other one will be recorded when that property closes at the end of August. The proposed timing for this condition, it currently requires them to complete these agreements prior to issuance of building permit. The solution that we have come up with is that this condition be tied to prior to distribution of, or the first distribution of the city loan funds. So when that would happen, is there's several milestones that come along the way in a project. So the first distribution would come at the time that framing is completed. There's four distribution points throughout the project site, so that's the first one, and that's when the initial distribution would happen. So those documents will be recorded in, well in advance of that timeframe. So what this does is it allows them to be able to work on getting those agreements fine-tuned and recorded, and release the building permit so they can start construction. In terms of environmental analysis, is exempt from CEQA, and the recommendation is to approve the condition of approval amendment. That's before you this evening.
Okay, any questions? No questions? All right. I want to declare public hearing open. Seeing that there is no members of the public sign up to speak, want to open and close public comment opportunity, and want to declare a public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction.
I'll move to adopt.
Second?
Move to adopt the resolution, resolution of both items?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pause, abstention? Next item.
Take us on to item 9.3, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving an increase to residential solid waste service rates by 3% effective September 1st, 2017 for fiscal year 2017-18, and approving consolidated solid waste administrative fee.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Heather Neff, Integrated Waste Manager. The item before you this evening is a proposed solid waste rate increase, as well as a consolidation of our existing solid waste administrative fees. To give you a little bit of background, Allied Waste, also known as Republic Services, provides for the collection, transportation, and disposal of all residential trash and recycling. Through their existing franchise agreement, Allied has allowed an annual rate adjustment to cover their annual inflationary cost increases. Over the past three years, those cost increases have not been passed on to residents. Instead, they have been absorbed by fund balance that is accrued via fee, franchise fee revenue. So although solid rates have not increased, the costs have still been going up. To give you an idea of what that looks like for the fiscal year 1617 rates, for 64-gallon service, which is what most residents have, the total cost to provide solid waste service is $26.60 a month. Of that, residents have been paying $25.51, that's their current monthly rate, and it has been the same for the last three years. And the difference between those two numbers is $1.9, so essentially, there is a rate gap between what the actual cost is versus what residents are paying. The proposed rate increase totals 3%, 1.95 of that is that annual inflationary cost increase that is our contractual obligation to Republic. And then staff is recommending an additional 1.05%, which would close a portion of that $1.9 rate gap. If approved, the rate increase would be effective on September 1st of this year, which is the start of the next billing cycle. That would then reduce that rate gap from $1.9 to 73 cents per account per month for, again, 64-gallon service. There is sufficient fund balance available to cover that remaining gap for the upcoming fiscal year. And then likely next year, you'll see a proposed rate increase, again, that will be for that remaining rate gap, to close that amount and bring us back whole with, so that costs are equal to rates. That will also be the first year of the new franchise agreement with Republic Services. They will not be receiving a rate increase that year, so the proposed rate increase for the following fiscal year 1819 would just be the amount to close the remaining rate gap. This is a quick chart to show you what that proposed increase looks like for all levels of service. As you can see in the red column, it varies from 67 cents per month for 32-gallon service to 95 cents per month for 96-gallon service. These amounts, the proposed rates shown on this table, are the total bottom line number paid by residents, so it includes the cost of service, the franchise fee, and the city administrative fees. Speaking of the city administrative fees, the portion of that that funds city operational costs. Currently, we have a total of four admin fees. They were all adopted at various points over the last 14 years, and altogether, they total $5.38 per account per month. A 2016 audit of solid waste services recommended that those fees be consolidated and reviewed to ensure that the city is collecting what it's, what is needed. So we did, staff underwent a comprehensive review of the solid waste fund. The summary of the findings from that review are in your staff report, and I'll just highlight a couple of the key items here. If you recall from earlier this year, the franchise fee revenue that was previously used to support solid waste services is now being used to support other city services. To offset that change in revenue, costs have been reduced by transitioning utility billing services to Allied Waste and other general department cost-cutting measures. We also found that the accumulated fund balance is sufficient to fund that continued rate rate gap, as I mentioned earlier. However, those existing four fees that total 538, they are not sufficient to cover current operations. However, the fund balance is sufficient to cover that deficit for a number of years. Consequently, staff is proposing that we maintain that current fee of, fee amount of $5.38, just consolidate all four of those fees into one single fee of $5.38. And by maintaining the status quo revenue amount, we'll draw down that fund balance slowly over time, so the increases over the next few years will be slow and steady, until we get that fund balance down to a healthy reserve amount. we get that fund balance down to a healthy reserve amount. The one caveat I will add to that, though, is that these projections are based on the current level of service, the current programs, and the current facilities that we have. We're currently undergoing a long-term strategic plan. The results of that will be available later this year. If there are recommendations from that that may change what programs or services we offer, then we would take those into account at the time, and these projections would then be updated. So, just before I conclude to go over our public noticing, we direct mailed over 60,000 notices regarding the proposed rate increase to both property owners and tenants. We also published notice of the public hearing this evening in the local paper. As of this morning, we received a total of seven protest letters. So, per Prop 218 requirements, this is not a majority protest. So, the staff recommendations for you this evening are to conduct this public hearing and adopt a resolution increasing solid waste rates by 3% effective September 1st, and consolidate the existing city admin fees into a single fee totaling $5.38 to be called the solid waste administrative fee. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions? There are no questions? Crystal clear? Thank you, ma'am. Want to declare a public hearing open? Want to open for a public common opportunity, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close, want to declare a public hearing closed. Have a motion on the floor? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? Next item.
That'll take us on to item 9.4, which is a, pardon me, which is a public hearing to consider approving a special planning area amendment and a resolution of intent and other approvals for the Bruceville Meadows Project.
Good evening once again, Darcy Geller with the Planning Department. For you tonight is the Bruceville Meadows Project. It includes numerous entitlements, a community plan and special planning area amendment to reconfigure boundaries and acreages of the land uses, and change the physical forms street figure in Chapter 7 of the SEPA document. A tentative subdivision map for 113 lots. This includes a large lot subdivision map and a small lot subdivision map. Design review for subdivision layout and abandonment of easements and right-of-way. Just some SEPA history. In the spring of 2012, the master planning began for this effort. The draft plan was released in 2014. The city council adopted the SEPA plan in July of 2014. The First Amendment was done in March of 2015, and your first project was approved in August of 2015, which is the Susidary Project. So, SEPA is an employment-oriented development. It provides a mix of employment and residential uses. It's supported by commercial and neighborhood-oriented uses, and it has a diverse range of housing densities. Before you on the screen currently is the overall SEPA plan, and over in the western portion is where the Bruceville Meadows Project is located. The first entitlement that we'll go over is the community plan amendment and special planning area amendment. So, what we're requesting this evening by the applicant is, this is the existing land use designation for the site and what they are proposing. So, the significant changes that you will see is an increase of 25 acres in the estate residential lots, a slight increase in the low-density residential, the elimination of the medium-density residential, and then a few other minor changes to the other land uses there. The other change that's being requested for the special planning area is to modify this particular exhibit, which at one point showed a collector's street going through here. It's now proposed to be a primary residential street. This will help with reducing speeds, cut through traffic, and just overall flow and continuity with the estate residential pattern. This is the large lot tentative subdivision map. It's for 17 lots. So, as you can see, they're dividing this up for 17 lots for phasing and financing purposes. In terms of the small lot tentative subdivision map, you can see here in the yellow, this is our single-family residential. There are approximately six different residential villages. High-density residential lot here, that would be developed at a future time. The project site also provides two pocket parks, some trails systems up through here by the drainage channel. Has a detention basin in the lower portion over here. It also provides some landscape lots in this area, and these provide connectivity to the In terms of access and layout, as you can see, the site externally has access off of Bilby, Bruceville, and camera wrote it will not have access off of. And access points would be on Street F. This will be signalized. Street O will not be signalized. There's also a future potential connection located within this corridor area right here. There is a condition of approval that does require this future connection to the east. In terms of the environmental review that was done for this, it is exempt from SEQA. There are previous EIR done for the SEPA plan, and this project is consistent with that. In terms of recommendation to the council, the recommendation is to find the project as exempt from SEQA, introduce and waive the full reading of the ordinance for the amendment to the special planning area, and adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to approve the community plan amendment, which is part of the general plan. So, as the council is aware, the city is allowed to do four of those amendments per year. So, we will be bringing this back at your meeting in August with an additional general plan amendment for another project, so we can package those together. And then, approve the remaining entitlements for the project, the large lot subdivision map, small lot, design review, and abandonment. I can answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Are there any questions? No questions? Wanted to declare a public hearing open. Want to invite the applicant to approach the podium.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Detrick, members of council, Jim Gillum of Gillum Consulting, representing the applicant on Bruceville Meadows. I've brought with me Matt Spockley and Stan Meddy from Wood Rogers, in case we have any technical questions that we need their expertise for. But I believe staff did an excellent job of not only working with us through this whole process, but also providing a thorough presentation on the project. They mentioned that we went from four different densities of residential to three, high-density residential, low-density residential, and estate residential. The vision for this project is that it's a executive enclave, and we've utilized the low-density residential to feather back from the HDR and into the estate residential. And aside from the roadways on the north and the west, we're buffered from other uses by water on the east and the south. What's not shown in the plan, but is existing to our east, is the south shed of Laguna Ridge's drainage facility. That's a wide channel with a trail along it that connects down into the southeast policy area, Shed C Channel. So, truly, this is isolated. There is anticipated to be a roadway connection in the future to the east where there's planned to be a park and other uses. But within the project, we've gone so far as to increase our lot sizes from the minimum that you would allow in the estate residential of 7,500 square feet up to our typical lot being 8,050 feet. That's a 70 by 115. So, it's not just the very minimum. We really do view this as a project that will provide housing for the future executives that we hope come to work in the businesses in the southeast policy area and elsewhere in Elk Grove. That's not to say that the typical lot is the largest lot. Our actual average-sized lot is more on the order of 8,800 square feet. So, the configuration that Stan has so eloquently drawn here does allow for more generous lots that back up to open space and exist on streets that are anticipated to be very different than what you typically see in newer subdivisions. We've utilized the estate residential street configuration, which has bio-swell ditches on each side and a sidewalk on one side to give it a more unique feel, something that you don't see every day. So, we're really excited about the project, and I'm open to any questions you might have. And if there are members of the public that would wish to speak, I'd like the opportunity to come back before you and respond to anything that is needed.
Any questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Jim, more of a comment. You know, you introduced your team, but you didn't introduce that we have the mayor of Auburn. Matt, welcome. Thank you for coming down.
He just liked his haircut.
He's a brother from another mother.
I have actually been asked not to disclose his position in public, as he's very self-conscious.
Pretty hard to be self-conscious when you're the mayor of a city.
Well comes the city of Elk Grove. As you can see, we love the look.
So does Stan.
Questions? No? Good?
And if I didn't, please accept my thanks of staff for a great job on this project. We've worked hard to get to a design that works for all the interests, and we think we've done a great job with it, working with them.
Yeah, excellent. All right. Want to open a public comment, seeing that there are no superior sign up to speak. I want to close public comment. Would like to invite the applicant back if you'd like to provide any closing statements. If not...
You care to rebut yourself, Jim?
No, no closing statement?
I've got a lot of conflicting things inside my head.
All right, absolutely.
It's billable hours, right? The mayor of Auburn want to address about his project?
It's all good.
Okay. Wanted to declare a public hearing closed, and counsel deliberation in direction.
So, I'd just like to say that rarely do you see a project coming in that not only wants to reduce the density of a single-family residential, but also then do a development standard that's different, and not do the standard sidewalk, curb, gutter, street, gutter, curb, sidewalk. And so, it'll give it a little more of an upscale feel, I imagine, down there. So, I support the change and would be happy to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second that, and I just want to add that, in addition to that, you know, I've always said that larger lots does not necessarily equate to, you know, a state or executive-type community. It has to do with the community itself, the amenities, and I appreciate the fact that you minimize the cut-through of streets, so, you know, you've minimized the chance of cars racing through there. They're curvilinear streets. They don't cut through the entire neighborhood. They'll dead-end for relatively short distances. Also, the access points, there's several access points to what I hope will be an active, the Shed C will be an active feature with trails along there that people can use jog and bike to. So, there's several access points along there, as well as to the park, the future park to the east. So, just wanted to add those comments.
And I appreciate, you know, not only your time tonight, but the time, Jim, you've taken in the past to sit down and go into the, get down really into the weeds on these projects on one-on-one meetings. Because, you know, sometimes we can spend an hour with you going over all this to eliminate, you know, the time that it takes up here to, you know, evaluate all those little fine points. So, really appreciate the extra time and effort, and taking into consideration the ideas that we give you, as well as that staff gives you, to make a good project even better. And I think you guys have done a great job with this, and I agree 100% with the other comments that have been made. You know, that what you did here was different. Makes it, it'll make a unique project out there, and look forward to that.
Okay, excellent. Councilman Hume, you made the motion.
Yeah, I need to actually introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title-only ordinance finding the Bruceville Meadows EG-15-029 Special Planning Area Amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines Section 15162 and 15183, and approving the special planning area amendment for the project. Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor? Aye. No abstention?
And then, I'll also move motion number two to adopt the resolution of both items. Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? Next item.
Take us on to item 9.5, which is a public hearing to consider resolution approving the report of delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Jamie Bandi, Revenue Manager. I'm here this evening to present the report of delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll. At the beginning of this month, staff sent out notices to roughly 3,000 customers, all of who were at least two-bill cycles delinquent. There are roughly a total of 5,600 accounts, which equate to $710,000 in delinquent charges. This includes both storm drain and solid waste charges. From those notices, we have already had a great response. Roughly 30,000 of the delinquent accounts have already been brought current, and payments are continuing to come in daily. Customers do still have time to bring those accounts current. Anyone who brings those accounts current by this Friday, July 28th, will be removed from that report before it's submitted to the county. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Questions? No? No questions? Perfectly clear.
Thank you.
All right. Want to declare a public hearing open. No open public comment opportunity, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment, declare a public hearing closed.
Staff's recommendation.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? Next item.
That'll take us on to item 9.6, which is a public hearing to consider the seventh annexation of Community Facilities District Number 2005-1, Laguna Ridge.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move, I mean, I'd waive staff presentation and go straight to the election.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, want to declare a public hearing open, seeing that, and want to open public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close and declare a public hearing closed.
Motion A1. Second.
Got a motion? Hang on a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? And request the results of the ballot tabulation, please.
Of the 460 possible votes, 460 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned in described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Should move to adopt that resolution?
Got a motion on A2? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, and got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No abstention? And next motion, please.
Move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title-only and ordinance living apportioning and special tax territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2005-1, Laguna Ridge, annexation number seven, and amending the code 3.21.010.
Okay, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
No abstention? Next item.
That'll take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive a presentation from staff regarding federal government relation services and consider a contract for those services with Van Skoyak
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager, and I'll be talking to you tonight about the federal government relation services contract. The city has contracted with Van Skoyak Associates since 2006. The contract renewal was originally heard on June 28th, but it was continued. Council had directed staff to schedule one-on-one meetings between council and the consultant, invite the consultant to make a presentation at council, and provide a detailed overview of the city's 2017 federal agenda and strategic plan. I'd like to take a moment to go over Van Skoyak and Associates' performance activities. They develop an annual federal legislative and agency agenda in close coordination with the city. Typically, in November or December, they come out to city hall and meet with staff and members of the council that are available, and talk about the city's priority. They also have a six-month follow-up review with each department. They provide an implementation and advocacy strategy for achieving the city's priority items. They advise and coordinate a congressional and agency direct engagement strategy, which includes an annual trip to Washington, DC. In recent years, this has been co-joined with the Metro Chamber cap-to-cap trip. They monitor, identify, and report on all legislative activity and funding opportunities of direct interest to the city. They arrange and participate in meetings with congressional executive branches relevant to the city's federal agenda. They interact with the city's congressional delegation and key federal agencies personnel to advance our federal projects. They coordinate activities associated with garnering letters of support for grant applications, and they communicate with city staff on a weekly basis on their activities and key developments in Washington. I'd like to take a few minutes to go over their accomplishments, and in the interest of knowing that there's new council members on the council since we've had this firm, I've incorporated some of their accomplishments... I've incorporated some of their accomplishments from prior years, since we have worked with them since 2006. So they helped secure $850,000 in energy efficiency and conservation block grants, which we use to implement a variety of energy improvements. They secured a $900,000 congressionally-directed grant to the Department of Homeland Security to retrofit this council chambers into an emergency operations center for the South County. They obtained support from the city's congressional delegation for $1 million in federal funding for the Sheldon Road interchange. They continue to effectively advocate for our community development block grant program, which we receive approximately $825,000 for. And they secured $250,000 in FTA bus replacement funding through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. They were also instrumental in congressional intervention in the successful campaign to have the FTA provide the city with a special designation in order to receive direct funding from the FTA for our E-TRAN operation. They've assisted the city in lobbying to maintain the current federal tax-exempt status of municipal bonds, as Congress has and plans to continue a comprehensive tax reform, which could alter that tax-exempt status. They worked in tandem with other local governments from throughout the country to extend and then make permanent a provision in federal law allowing public agencies to pay for the salary of a dedicated Army Corps of Engineers staff member. That's called a Section 214 authority. We have utilized that in the past. We are not utilizing it now. And they've helped secure congressional letters of support for DOJ public safety applications. They've helped promote and ensure the city had meetings with key decision-makers. I don't, I won't write, I won't list out each one, but I think the most notable is a very successful meeting we had with Secretary Anthony Fox regarding our multimodal station, and Councilmember Hume was present at that meeting. Regarding our Tiger grant advocacy and assistance, in 2004, they helped us to put together a very successful grant application, where we were highly competitive in that grant. We ultimately were not funded, but we made it to the upper echelons of the grant process. So that prompted us in 2015 to put in a subsequent grant that we thought we could potentially get funded. Unfortunately, the planning grant, the planning grant criteria had been removed, so we weren't as competitive as the prior year, and we had a lengthy pre-construction activity period, which is really, was the grant issue. I'd like to talk a moment about the federal landscape. Since 2011, there's been a temporary ban on earmarks. The city was very involved in the earmark process, so things have changed federally since earmarks have been banned. With the new administration, the climate in D.C. is evolving as the administration advances their policy agenda and directives. There's a yet-to-be-unveiled transportation infrastructure package, potentially that we'll hear about at the end of the year, which will have some opportunities, hopefully, for the city. And many of our priority projects are in the process of advancing to the eligibility phases to be competitive for the federal grant and financing programs. A lot of the programs that I've talked about, they are so competitive, like the Tiger grant, they say that less than 5% of all applications are awarded, so you have to be very competitive. So the 2017-18 legislative goals are, one, camera road extension is to secure funding. So staff is, staff in conjunction with Van Skoyak Associates would like to plan a September 2017 trip to Washington, D.C. We're currently evaluating the Infra grant that was released in early July to see if we want to put in an application for that. Public Works is evaluating the strength of our application as compared to the strength of an application by the Capital Southeast Connector. We're having discussions regarding a TIFI loan program to help, you know, bridge any financing gap with Infra grant, and we're looking, we're going to be looking for potential funding opportunities in the infrastructure package that will be released later this year. Regarding our multimodal station project, the city needs to complete the feasibility study, which we anticipate will finish in October. That feasibility study will hopefully help us determine the best location for the project. The San Joaquin JPA is also planning on submitting a state cap-and-trade grant application that would include funding for a platform, and then Van Skoyak Associates will continue to advocate for continued funding in the Tiger program. Regarding a bus park and ride station, we're exploring the potential of federal funding for a future large lot. There was an FTA bus and bus facility grant solicitation that came out last week. However, staff has decided to wait until next year, as we haven't selected a site. With the implementation of the Comprehensive Operational Analysis that'll come out in October, the city will be able to collect ridership data and then look for the best site. Regarding Bus Rapid Transit, really with the completion of the Comprehensive Operational Analysis in October, that will help us collect data for BRT implementation regarding the express route. I'm not going to go into detail on the next one, but I'll just say these are some of the things that they will continue to monitor: federal public safety grants, the Sacramento River levy fortification, CDBG, any permitting issues that staff come across, Shed Sea Storm Drainage Project, and any civic center funding. Staff feels that Van Skoyak Associates has a good record of service, they're knowledgeable, responsive, detail-oriented, they possess an in-depth understanding of the federal process and the city, they provide strategic advice, counsel, and insight, they prepare staff and council members for federal engagements, they facilitate meetings with congressional executive branch officials and decision-makers key to the city's agenda, and they position the city's priority projects and issues for success. And we believe that they effectively serve the city's liaison in Washington, D.C. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution dispensing with the formal request for proposal procedures pursuant to the Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 3.42.140, and authorize the city manager to execute a three-year contract with Van Skoyak Associates for federal government relations services with a not-to-exceed amount of $183,600, or for such a lesser amount as directed by the city council. I'm here to answer any questions.
183 is for the three years complete?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Kara, thanks for setting up the meetings for Pete to come out, and I had a great face-to-face with him, as well as some time outside of City Hall to go over some other additional issues. Probably spent a total of about three hours with him, so really got into the weeds on a lot of issues, kind of even recapped the history of a lot of the things that you went over, and, you know, it's been some tough times in the last several years, so, and nothing's really, everything's been pretty tight even since the presidential change, and so we'll just, hopefully, there's some good stuff on the horizon, because definitely not just Elk Grove, but everywhere in the nation needs infrastructure improvements. The whole country's deteriorated, so we definitely need to free up some money and the jobs that it creates that go with it. But I really appreciate all the extra time you've, you've put on this, and you've done a great job with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Kara. I just want to echo the sentiments. Thank you.
Okay.
Save my comments.
Dead out of what the Vice Mayor said.
Nothing additional?
Everything they said too. I couldn't do it, but thank you for setting up the conference.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree with the Vice Mayor. That's it. Thank you.
Brevity, I love it.
Want to open public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close, and council deliberation in direction.
So, I'd like to...
Got a motion?
I'll second that, but I just wanted to comment, given, I had this item pulled from the agenda last time, and as the Vice Mayor mentioned, had a great opportunity to sit down with Pete Eviich and talk about a lot of different things. I don't think Pete realized I had played a similar, or have a similar role in my day job, so it was, it was good to get into some details about their work plan, and we shared some conversations about the levy fortification and Shed Sea, so look forward to their services on there, to help on that. But I, you know, I'm very confident that they have a great understanding of our issues and priorities, as far as infrastructure is concerned, and so, you know, I'm comfortable with this extension.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? Next item.
Take us to item 10.2, which is to receive a report and provide direction on Laguna Boulevard and Elk Grove Boulevard alternatives to construct Class I pedestrian and bike pathway over Union Pacific Railroad tracks.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Ryan Chapman with the Public Works Department. The last time this item was before you, you had directed staff to come back with some alternatives to evaluate adding Class I bikeways to both the railroad crossings on Laguna Boulevard and Elk Grove Boulevard. In preparing that analysis, staff used the standards from Caltrans Highway Design Manual for the establishment of bike lanes, and we also reviewed what was in the trails plan. The trails plan caused for both Laguna Boulevard and Elk Grove Boulevard at this location to be Class II bike lanes and a parallel trail south of Elk Grove Boulevard that would be a Class I facility. For the purposes of placement of the trail locations, we were looking at along the north side of Laguna Boulevard and along the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. For the project sculpt on both locations, we were looking at what it would take to build that facility to the nearest intersection on each side of the location, so that we were able to connect to the existing bikeway infrastructure. And just a few of the other constraints that we identified would be funding right away and then agreements with the railroad. For the specifics on the Laguna Boulevard location, this is the north side of the road that we were looking at. Staff assumed that there would be widening of the sidewalk and the construction of retaining walls, and those are factored into the cost estimates. We also prepared a couple exhibits looking at what the turning movements in and out of the trail would be, really illustrating that there would be a need to modify the traffic signal and provide some sort of phasing for the proposed trail. The existing condition out there includes bike lanes, 11-foot travel lanes, and then a 12-foot travel lane on the inside of the road. The first alternative we looked at was without widening the bridge, what could we accommodate? And with a removal of the sidewalk and reduction of the travel lanes, it would be possible to install a Class 10-foot bike lane along the road. And this alternative was estimated to cost $5.3 million. The other alternative that was looked at was bridge widening, which would allow, preserving the bike lane on the south side of the road, and this was estimated to cost $8.5 million. This also keeps the 12-foot travel lanes and provides a 14-foot travel lane on the inside near that median. The third alternative that was looked, Laguna, was installing a new bridge, removing the bike lanes from the existing bridge to provide 10-plus-foot travel lanes, and this was estimated to cost $8 million. For the Elk Grove project, the trail was assumed to be on the south side of the road. We assumed that there would be some need for either some sort of median between the road and the trail, or acquire right-of-way or anisement to put the trail in. Again, just showing what the turning movements would be to, from the trail. The existing scenario has a sidewalk on the north side of the road, but not on the south side of the road, and 5-foot bike lanes with 11-foot travel lanes. The midterm improvement that we looked at, which would not include widening of the bridge, installs the Class I bikeway, removes both the sidewalk and the bike lanes from the facility. Widening of the bridge would, again, preserve the bike lanes and the sidewalk, and then a new bridge would eliminate the bike lanes from the existing bridge, but retain the sidewalk. In summary, for Laguna, the midterm and long-term scenarios, the midterm scenario was $5.3 million, and the cheapest of long-term scenarios, which was the new bridge, was $8 million. And then in Elk Grove Boulevard, the midterm would be $2.5 million, with the long-term, the cheapest of long-term scenarios being $6.3 million. And I am available if there are any questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Ryan, would that, when you said the short term and long term, would the, that be collective, one stack on top of the other, or is it...
The work on the bridge would have to be redone, but the work on the approaches to the bridge would be the same in both scenarios.
But, so would, that adds together, is that what you're saying?
Um, no. It would be, the work on the bridge would be only probably an additional $3 million in the long term. If we were to build the midterm now and then come back and do the long term, we would probably lose half a million dollars worth of effort on the bridge, but the actual bridge widening would be less than the $8 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman, Sue?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ryan, did you have a chance to take a look at, these issues aside, because anything here is, you know, I think, long-term, but in terms of ability to stripe the existing lanes today?
Um, yes.
Or the effectiveness of that?
I spent some time today looking at some of the other alternatives, and one of the things that came up was possibility of adding the green bike lane detail on the bridge over that crest curve to essentially accent the existing bike lanes, and I think that would be, that is a viable solution, and it's something that we could move forward on.
Do you have a cost estimate associated with that?
For both locations, it would be less than $75,000.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, I had a question. In one of the early slides, you mentioned that this would require something with respect to the signal lights and that would negatively affect timing?
Well, it wouldn't negatively affect timing, but we would probably have to add some sort of a dedicated signal phase, so if you were coming off of that trail and trying to get through the intersection to the bike lane, you had a dedicated green.
Okay.
And it would be some sort of a bicycle timing element added to the signal.
Can you pull that slide up again?
Do you have an idea what, I mean, how much time are we talking about?
I'd probably be looking at a cycle that needed to have 15 or 20 seconds.
15 to 20 seconds?
Yes.
Okay.
The current cycle out there is 140 seconds.
Okay, so you'd be, all right, so you're going to be lengthening the time that the light would stay green in order to accommodate the bicycles enough time to get through it?
Yes.
Okay, and that would then negatively affect the ability to sort of synchronize our east-west signals?
It could potentially negatively affect coordination. Coordination would have to be looked at as we advance the project, but it could be timed in such a way that it does not.
Okay. And then my final question is, in looking at the Laguna Boulevard midterm solution, it looks like essentially it's just tearing out a sidewalk and adding a barrier, moving a barrier over and re-striping the lanes. Why is that so expensive? So much more so than the Elk Grove midterm.
A lot of it has to do with the widening of the sidewalks on the approaches to the bridges and the need to most likely add some sort of a retaining wall, so that the existing sidewalk can be widened out to the Class I standard, and a median can be added between that and traffic.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Ryan, I don't even know if it's feasible or legal, but you know, they make the, the very large buttons, they're not, you know, they're not the little, you know, three-quarters inch or whatever they are, they're more like four, five, six inches high. Are those permissible to put in as a barrier on a bike lane?
Well, if I had a buffer, if I had a couple feet between the travel lane and the bike lane, that is something we could look at. I would not recommend going out there and putting them on just the existing stripe.
Okay.
They, I have gotten some feedback from the cycling communities that they're not a pleasant ride.
The, who is it like them?
There's some of the cycling groups I've spoken to in the past don't feel like that's actually a benefit to them, and it makes it very difficult for them to ride on that line if they need to.
Okay. I was looking at more if they have a bike lane and protect them from the traffic, at least, it's, I mean, it's a very hard one to drive over, right? I mean, not you could, but it's almost like driving over a curb.
Yes, and if we had the ability to widen out that stripe and create a buffer zone of a couple feet, I could see putting something like that down, or even going with full-height delineators.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you. Want to open public comment opportunity, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close, council deliberation in direction.
So, I'd like to start it off, just because it's my area. You know, when I run over this hill, like, not that often, but I wish more often, but bike over the hill, my kids bike over this hill, cars are flying by 55, 60 miles an hour. I appreciate all these different solutions here, and I... I appreciate all these different solutions here, and I, but, you know, the simple fact is pedestrian and bike use was an afterthought for these structures. If you, if you're up there, you'll see what I'm talking about. It's very, it's very narrow, and that's just the, that's just the sidewalk part of it. So I think Ryan did a great job trying to squeeze things in here, but again, you put an 11-and-a-half-foot lane in the middle lane. We got a lot of larger vehicles now than we, than we did prior. Just to have, be alongside this kind of traffic when the cars are flying that fast, if we're talking, I think we're talking for the long term. And so I look at how we want to invest in our community, what do we want to say? If we're serious about multimodal transportation, encouraging bike and pedestrians, connecting trails, I think we need to, you know, put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. And I want to remind folks that we're not about to shell out $14.3 million today. We're not about, we're not about to shell out $14.3 million for any one project at all, or this project, excuse me, at all. A lot of our projects are funded by grants, and so while we have matching funds that equate to, you know, a lot of times, Bob, correct if I'm wrong, 20%, maybe 20, 25%. The rest of the money, we cobble together from many different federal and state grants, and so I would expect that that strategy would continue. And then finally, we're talking about putting, we've been, we've been trying to connect Sacramento, a bike trail up to Sacramento, and the current alignment as we're looking at is Franklin Boulevard. So being able to access Franklin Boulevard and go up to Sacramento will increase the usage of those facilities over time. So while today there may not be a whole lot of folks utilizing that, I believe in the long term, when Franklin is cut through and there is a bike trail to go on, I think it will encourage more folks to use it. And if folks feel safe, they will be more likely to use it. So I would, I would recommend Alternative III as an unfunded CIP item for future investment. Thank you.
Okay. I would support that for the same reasons of preparing for the future. I think that we got to think in terms of what's the next step and what are we doing in preparation of it. And I, I think that in, I preferably would go Alternative I, but I think that, you know, along the lines of thinking about the future preparation, I would support Alternative III.
I'd like, if Mr. Chapman's, what he's telling me is correct, and I believe him, that you're only going to lose about $500,000 worth of improvements, I'd like to put both Alternative I and Alternative III forward as unfunded CIP projects. You know, if we can crack the nut on a little less than $8 million, that improves the dangerous conditions that exist today and gives us time to come up with the additional $6.5 million. Am I doing the math right on that? That we'd be looking at about $8 million for the first phase and then only the delta between the first phase or the Alternative I and Alternative III, more or less?
I believe so.
Okay.
You have a money tree? I don't know.
No, I don't. That's why it's called unfunded. It's on my wish list.
I, I support the, in concept, I support it. If we can cobble together different funds, whether they're roadway fees or trail money or developer donations or whatever, whatever we can cobble together to make this happen, I'll support it, but to just blindly go with $14 million, I just can't do that.
Well, it's, it's hard because it's a, it's a bridge structure, right? I mean, Camden Trail, we just funded, and there's, I don't know, say, Bob, four or five different grant funding sources we used to cobble that, you know, and that one's only like $3 million, but still, we use a lot of grant monies. This one, you know, there's obviously a lot more concrete and things involved. And again, is it, had you been, had to done it as part of the original overpass, it would have been negligible to the total project cost at that time. You know, what we're paying for is the shortsightedness of what was built before, that's all. But I totally appreciate, you know, the cost. I think if we, hopefully, put it in and we're able to cobble together the funding sooner than later, and it is that amount, but, you know, if you need it again over time, things never get cheaper, is all. So I would rather, I would rather, again, if you, if you believe this is a priority in terms of multimodal investment, transportation investments, then let's get it on the books now. Let's find the funds, and we'll match it and have our matching funds and get it done, you know, before it gets more costly. I do want to quickly add, in the meantime, even though if we do Alternative I and III, we still are left with, it's an unfunded line item, and my point earlier about how do we make it a little more palatable today? And I heard Ryan, you know, we were talking about the striping, and that one is a $75,000 investment, and I'm wondering if council will be willing to also put forth that as an interim measure for, for folks today.
I can live with the $75,000 right now. That's, that's, I think, a safety issue in itself that we're willing to do, but to do, and I'm willing to support Councilman Hume's recommendation, once we have the funding, or at least bring something back. So I don't know if it's something we should, I think we should have a future discussion, bring it back when the funding's available.
I think it sounded like we have a consensus, you know. You know, obviously, it's not funded, but we want to keep the options open and make this a priority. So I think we're good.
John, do you have a method that would make sense to, you know, I mean, I think, if I'm reading the tea leaves right, we have support of all five of us. It's just, it's the funding issue. Would this have to come back at a future date when the funding's available, or how would that work?
Yes, we'll tap Councilmember Hume's money tree that he seems to be hiding.
Yeah, you better shake it pretty hard.
When you find it, you better give me the map.
But yeah, I mean, you can add it as an unfunded project now. That'd be fine with I and III, and then it'll come back once we're in a position to fund it and ultimately build it. It'll come back, yeah, it would have to.
Maybe we can borrow it from Auburn.
I heard you say something about developer donations. I don't know.
Okay. You have enough?
Did I hear, so I heard I and III, and then okay on the striping for the?
Correct. I mean, you know, the idea being if you can skip and go direct, go and go directly to III, let's do that, but if we can reuse most of the money that would be spent doing I, that's obviously an easier grasp.
Right, right. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Okay. Next item.
Take us to item 10.3, which is provide direction on possible support for the Paris Climate Agreement, joining the mayor's national climate agenda and providing possible direction to staff on updates to the city's climate action plan.
Gave you mayor counsel, Christopher Jordan, with the city manager's office. This is a report-back item that you asked for at your June 14 meeting. We're going to be going over the Paris Climate Agreement and just tying that into the city's existing and forthcoming updates to the climate action plan. Put a background on the climate, the Paris Climate Agreement. It's an agreement developed by most nations of the world through the United Nations to accelerate and intensify actions and investment in a low-carbon future. It does this by trying to target a global temperature control to sort of keeping the average temperature across the globe at no more than two degrees above pre-industrial levels and actually trying to get to a 1.5 degree or a degree and a half above pre-industrial levels. One of the ways it goes about doing this, the primary way, is allowing each country to determine what it calls its contributions or nationally determined contributions towards the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. It calls for countries to set those and then reevaluate them on a regular basis about every five years or so. And as those reevaluations go through, try to make them more ambitious with each cycle. The contributions towards those reductions are non-binding. There's no legal authority or legal mechanism through the agreement to enforce anything, but it does set up a framework for global, for a global carbon market. Essentially, if one country is able to be more aggressive with its reduction strategy, it can then provide those as credits to another country that may not be as aggressive or have struggles with achieving those reductions. The agreement implements the 1992 UN Framework Convention on Climate Change. There's been a number of ongoing efforts the UN's been working on, and this, this is the latest effort. It was adopted by the members at the meeting in December of 2015, required signatories by all the various member agencies, member countries. The United States signed on in September of 2016, and there were enough members on board by November for it to have an effective date, November 4th of that year. As many people know, President Trump announced on June 1 of this year that the US would be withdrawing from the agreement. That withdrawal is not effective until November 4th of 2020, based on the terms and conditions that are in the agreement. There's been a lot of talk around the country about what local agencies and regular citizens can do to sort of implement the, or follow the Paris Agreement or pursue the Paris Agreement in some way, given what the federal government's action has been. One group that's been pursuing this is the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, or Carbon Mayors, as they're calling themselves. It's essentially a mayor's, mayor-to-mayor network on collaborating on climate issues and climate change. There are no binding commitments through this group, but they do encourage cities to pursue actions to achieve reduction targets through developing a greenhouse gas inventory, setting near- and long-term targets for reduction of greenhouse gases, and developing a climate action plan. And ultimately, the group supports the Paris Climate Agreement. These three things that they're recommending encouraging cities to do are all things the city has already done through its climate action plan, which was adopted in 2013. It does set those reduction targets and outlines measures to achieve the reductions based upon prior legislation at the time at the state level and the state's scoping plan. We are looking at an update to the climate action plan later this year into next year concurrent with the general plan update. There's been some changes in state regulations over the last couple of years since the plan was adopted. There's also been a new scoping plan that's being created right now, as well as just the general changes in the general plan per year direction that the plan will need to reflect. There's also some upcoming implementation the state's doing with things like the building code, principally getting residential construction by 2020 to a net-zero energy usage and commercial by 2030. And those are things that have happened since 2013 that we can incorporate into the plan. So staff's focus on the update is leveraging, continuing to leverage existing plans and programs, which is what our strategy was in 2013. So possible actions for the council to consider this evening, there is a resolution included in your packet that would authorize the mayor to join and sign on to the climate mayor's group and their letter of support for the Paris Agreement, should you so choose. Additionally, council could choose to provide direction, if any, on the updates to the climate action plan if you choose for us to approach it in a different way. concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions? No questions? Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
How much time has been spent putting this together?
I think initial drafting, maybe two hours, and then coordinating with the city attorney's office, maybe another hour or two. It's not been a very intensive effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? No? No questions? Thank you. All right. Want to open for a public comment? Other than the green sheets, there are no members of the public here sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Vice.
Yeah, so I'll kick it off here. When you asked for this to be brought back, I supported it because it felt like you were looking for direction from council. I didn't realize at that point that we were going to have a full-blown resolution to be voted upon. I don't personally feel that that's necessary. I think you are the mayor. If you want to sign on as the mayor to a mayor's action plan, you, you have that prerogative to do that, but I appreciated you checking in. And furthermore, I think that, given the fact that their action plan, the city's already undertaken those endeavors, it's kind of a ceremonial point. What I would not want to see is us to devolve into the situation where we do what I think amounts to a little more than chest-thumping and issuing proclamations and resolutions about issues of national and global concern over which we have no control. I'm looking at you, Berkeley. So that's, that's one point on this, and why I don't, really wouldn't want to get into a full-blown resolution versus you just signing on and representing yourself as the mayor. But I also just want to make a general comment about why I think the Paris Climate Agreement misses the mark, and that's because, to me, it seems obviously self-important to set your goals related to global temperature. Anthropomorphic climate change may very well be a reality, but it, there's also an aspect of voodoo science to it that's unprovable. Dinosaurs didn't drive cars, and where are they today? Mastodons didn't get from Russia to Alaska by swimming. So the, the world changes. That's a fact that you cannot argue. And so if you want to put forward an argument that deflates your opponents, don't give them things to glaze their eyes over on. And so if you're going to talk about Miami being underwater by 2030, or airborne insects creating a plague, or polar bears becoming bloodthirsty, that just gives ammunition for people to discredit you. The argument for what this is hoping to accomplish is very simple, and it's irrefutable, and it's twofold. One, pollution is bad, and two, that natural resources are finite and therefore conservation is good. When you speak in simple terms like that, there's nothing to argue against. But when you start talking about chicken little prophecies, it just, I think it just delves into the area of the absurd. But so, again, I support you signing on if that's what you feel you want to do, representing yourself as the mayor, but I don't think that there needs to be a formal resolution.
And, and I'm fine with that, Councilman. And I think when my, in my initial discussion with the city attorney, he thought that the perception by the mayor signing on could give people the illusion that the whole entire city council is important, is in support of that. So I wanted an opportunity for us to discuss it, and I appreciate the clarification.
Well, we all have our individual rights to sign with our titles, as long as we're not representing the city. You know, so I mean, I can sign as Vice Mayor Detrick, and I have on a number of items unrelated to the city. I mean, I agree with pretty much everything Councilman Hume said. I mean, really, it's just, it's a paper tiger, and really, it's, it's political posturing. And I don't think we need to play politics up here. I think we just need to take care of the business. I support climate action as much as anybody does. You brought up some great points, and relative to climate action, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, you know, there's, even with, even there's confliction amongst the scientists relative to this. So I mean, I think what our job up here is to take care of the, the business of Elk Grove and things that we're, we have a direct effect on. To get into other jurisdictions' business, I don't want to be up at the mayor's of Auburn and start doing, writing letters of complaints about things he's doing up there that I don't agree with, and I don't expect him to be coming down into our jurisdiction other than his professional career. And so I, I agree. If you want to sign on that as Mayor Steve Lee, I support you 100%.
Mayor, members of the council, if I could clarify a couple of things, because I may have been the source of why we're all here tonight. Mayor did ask me whether or not he was authorized to sign without council support, and reviewing the norms and procedures. I concluded that if he's going to be signing on as the mayor, he's effectively speaking on behalf of the city as a representative of the city, and I recommended, and he took my recommendation, to bring this to the full council and get their support. So if the council decides essentially not to oppose or object or have any issue with the mayor signing off on this, you're sort of tacitly approving that. And I suppose you could do that without a formal resolution, if that's what you want to do. But I would be cautious to say that as a mayor or an individual council member, that you could effectively be, what could be construed as speaking on behalf of the city without the council's consent or approval. And you've sort of given that consent tonight, or at least a non-objection to the mayor signing off on this, and that's okay. But I didn't want to have a situation where the mayor steps out in front without having an opportunity to the full council to weigh in on their points of view.
And I think, I think it also gets down to is, you know, just like when we public speak, right? If we're out in, out in the community, public speaking, we're speaking as an individual, not, not as the, as the council. And so when you're doing this, if you're sending it on your personal letterhead, not city letterhead, not city logo, you're sending it from your personal information, or you're signing in your, in your business position, as long as you aren't representing, that you're representing the city or the board as a whole.
You and I are in agreement on that. However, the way that the climate mayor's declaration, for lack of a better term, is drafted, it's drafted as the mayors of the cities, and therefore, I've concluded that you're effectively signing on as the mayor of the city, as a representative of the city. And that's one of the reasons I recommended that the mayor bring it to the full council tonight. Again, if the council doesn't necessarily need to pass a formal Again, if the council doesn't necessarily need to pass a formal resolution, if you really have no objection to the mayor signing on to that, that's effectively the same thing, and he could sign on to it. But again, I didn't want to advise that he could sign on to this without knowing the views of the rest of the council members.
I think caution's always good.
And that was kind of my comments as well, is I appreciated the mayor wanting to kind of take our temperature and not just do it rogue on his own, but...
Take your temperature. No pun. Take your temperature.
No pun intended. It's about two degrees cooler than it was a minute ago, but, no, but I think that in this instance, what these mayors have banded together to say, they are representing themselves as mayors of cities and not necessarily the council that they sit upon.
So I'll echo Councilman Hume's comments, and also express my appreciation for the mayor checking in with us as well. I absolutely have no issue if he chooses to sign on. This is, I think the city of Elk Grove is taking care of its business in the sense of we're being responsible with our climate action plan. I mean, I deal with, you know, in my day job, how we're going to accommodate sea level rise and more, you know, the more rain-on-snow events that we expect to happen. And so absolutely, climate change is real. I like Councilman Hume's arguments, though, you know, making it about pollution is bad, you know, how can we...
Breathe it over.
Yeah, you know, so breathing is good. Breathing without coughing up a lung is good. So anyway, I think, I mean, you have my support, Mayor, if you want to sign on to that, so...
Actually, on a little side note to this, I was in a meeting today, and I think there was something that came out of Europe by 4040, excuse me, 2040, they're going to outlaw gasoline vehicles. It's pretty aggressive, but it'd be interesting.
I will just add, though, again, Elk Grove, you know, I think our actions speak louder than the words on this issue, right? I mean, the things that we're doing with, from lead construction to the revamping of our, you know, of our no-flush toilets and things like that, solar, I think we're making a statement that we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint, so, you know, to me, those are the things that matter.
And I'm supportive of this as well. I think at the last meeting, we were already all supportive of it. I didn't realize it was going to come as a presentation, and I echo, I think we appreciate you checking in, but this is something that we definitely all support you on, so...
All right. Excellent. All right. We're done with that. Next item.
Next item, 10.4, which is Consider a Resolution Accepting the Sheldon Road/Waterman Road Intersection Improvement Phase 1 Project and Discussing and Receiving a Presentation on the Phase 2 Landscape and Irrigation of the Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ricardo, you're Capital Program Manager. Item is in regards to the Sheldon and Waterman Road Roundabout Project. As mentioned, we're looking to accept the Phase 1 work as complete. I'll authorize the preparation filing of the notice of completion. I have a little presentation on the Phase 2 work with the landscaping and a CIP and budget amendment for some of that work. Slide shows a location of the project, the, you know, it's the roundabout. The road construction is complete, and I think perhaps you recall, we did some rapid construction on this. We did a full closure of that location for about six weeks. Were able to get in there in a hurry, get the roadway construction done, get it opened back up. I will mention, I'm sort of proud, we did pick up two awards for this project, one from the American Public Works Association, that's awarded in a couple of weeks, and also the Northern California Construction Management Association for those rapid construction achievements. The, I'm sure you've all been through there since then. It handles the traffic very well. There's a huge reduction in the wait times that were there. It's a big improvement to the traffic flow from a traffic standpoint. Project worked out very well. The one thing that happens to be missing out there now is the landscaping. That location is not served by our water district. There is no piped water within about three-quarters of a mile. All the residences out there are served by wells. When we were in the early project development phase, a concept was developed for this to avoid having to install any irrigation to go with a large amount of rather small plants planted in the fall, late in the fall, so they could establish through the rainy season and then kind of grow and mature at kind of a natural slow rate. Unfortunately, there were some mistakes made during the design process, and what ended up in the final set of plans, what was also presented to residents out in Gresha, was a much larger landscape than we had intended. When that was discovered, the contractor was directed to not purchase and install any of the landscaping until we could figure out what the most appropriate solution to that was. This is a rendering of the landscaping that was developed for the project. Kind of the tan areas that are there are mostly decomposed granite. It was originally planned with, you know, a smaller number of plants because of the lack of irrigation. What ultimately ended up in the design plans were about 300 larger shrubs and about a dozen trees that were about eight, between eight and 20 feet tall, depending on the species. Again, that size of plant, most of those plants are five-gallon plants, they require irrigation. In construction, the construction management staff attempted to work with the contractor on a change order to add well and irrigation in, and they could not come to a, kind of an agreement on a reasonable price. The decision became to not install any of the landscaping and to look at doing that work as a separate Phase 2 contract. So what we have proposed as the Phase 2 is the landscaping that was set in the original set of plans with the dozen trees, about 300 plants, the addition of irrigation and a well at a cost of about $145,000. Addition, there are two other items we wish to do in kind of the Phase 2 work. There are two drainage basins on the site. They were designed to retain water to help with aquifer recharge. Unfortunately, they are holding that water for too long, and it's created a vector control problem. We've had some complaints from the citizens, and mosquito vector control has done some treatment out there. So we're going back out. We'd like to remedy that problem so it doesn't retain the water for so long. That's a cost of about $20,000, refunded out of drainage fees. That's done kind of in the spirit of the Drainage Master Plan, but it's not a standard of the city, it's not a requirement. The other thing that we wish to fix, there is a small area where there is a ponding problem. The design consultant admits that that is a design error on their fault, and it's their fault, and they will cover the cost for that repair, but we need the funding capacity in order to encumber a contract for that. So they will reimburse us for the construction cost when those bids come in for that work as a design error. So the cost of these items is about $190,000. We do have savings in the project to cover some of the design and CM costs. The total request is about $197,000 to do this work. If you approve of this, we will finish the design work in the fall, advertise it over the winter, and do the construction for these items in the spring of '18. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Vice Mayor?
So while we're waiting to do this, I've driven by there a few times, the, I don't know if it's been recent or not, that you've done any weed abatement out there, but at least it would clean it up if we can get somebody out there and do the weed in the extent to the improvements there, because it looks pretty bad when you drive through there.
Okay. I haven't looked at it recently, but we had that complaint before, and O&amp;M crews have gone out, but we'll send them out again.
It has been recently mowed, but...
It has recently?
Yeah.
How recent? Because I was there about a week ago, and it was, I thought it was pretty bad.
Okay. I went through earlier this week, and it's, there's a lot of weeds, but they're low.
Okay. Maybe it's been cut since I went through there, then? Okay.
Councilman Hill?
That'll finish that off, because, right, I mean, right now, it's a beautiful intersection that, it really takes away from it with the lack of having some kind of landscape to it, so...
What are you doing this weekend? Can you plan?
Excuse me? You can't pay me enough.
Just teasing. Just out of curiosity, I saw the funding, you had...
District 2.
You had $20,000 for, out of the drainage fund, and the others coming out of roadway fund. So just wondering, and a lot of that money seemed to be going towards the irrigation and well. If you're, I want to confirm, if you're able to use roadway for road maintenance and such, would you reverse that and maybe use more of the drainage fund on this one? Just a curiosity.
The drainage fund is limited to certain drainage improvements. The drainage, so it's eligible for the drainage basin, but it's not really eligible for the landscape.
Irrigation. Okay. So you have to use the roadway funding for that part?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
What was the modification on the drainage? I stepped out for a second. The modification on that?
The drainage basins were designed to retain water to help with aquifer recharge in the area, but they're retaining the water longer than we want, and it's created a mosquito vector issue.
So is that a design issue, too?
That's hard to gauge, because the original layout had a cobble bottom, and then our O&amp;M department asked to have that removed, because it's an additional maintenance cost that happened in construction. And so I don't know where that really falls.
So everybody's doing this?
Yeah.
I got you.
I just kind of offer a clarification. Councilmember, assuming, you asked about roadway money. Were you thinking that we're using Measure A or gas tax on this? Because we're, I believe the roadway money is roadway fee money.
It's a roadway fee.
Yeah, developer funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Questions? No? Okay. Councilman?
Not a question, I just want to say... Not a question, I just want to say, I love this project. I sometimes will change up the route that I normally would have driven somewhere, just so I can go that way and go through the roundabout. I think it turned out wonderful. I think the residents are very happy with it. And it's a stark contrast that I've noticed on several occasions, how quickly you get through this intersection and how long it then takes you to get through Bradshaw and Sheldon.
Right.
And so it just shows you the efficiency of a roundabout.
Yeah.
You know what? Councilman Hume brings up a good point. I met with some Sheldon residents, and they just love that roundabout. They talked about how excited they are about this one, too, so I'm excited to see this start happening.
And kudos to you guys on the award as well. Congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. Looking forward to it.
All right. Want to open public comment, seeing that note?
I think we have a couple of motions there.
Do we?
Adopted a couple of resolutions, so I'll move motion number one to adopt the resolution.
Shall we open public comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there you go.
Let's open public comment, just in case somebody wants to like to speak. Since there are no speakers signed up to speak, let's close public comment and council deliberation and direction.
I'm not sure if I want to do it still.
I'll move motion number one. Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Objection.
Motion number two?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Objection. Next item.
Next item, 10.5, which is Consider a Resolution Executing a Construction Contract for the Big Horn Boulevard Extension and Bilby Road Extension Projects and Discussion of Other Actions Related to the New Growth Area.
Just so you know, we're going to take, we're going to do a presentation on 10-5, 10-6, and 10-7, one presentation to kind of give you the full picture. So that's what you're going to, that's what you're about to see.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kevin Busey. I'm a senior civil engineer in Public Works Department, and here to talk to you about the New Growth Area Infrastructure Projects. This presentation will be covering items 10.5 through 10.7, as Bob mentioned earlier. I've got before you the recommended actions, which are: Award the NGA roadway project and amend the budget, award the sewer lift station project, and to approve the Sacramento Area Sewer reimbursement agreement associated with the sewer facilities that are in the roadway projects. I want to talk a little bit about the projects. On the map, you'll see in yellow, we have the Bilby Road project, which is a two-lane road, including utilities, water, sewer, drainage, telecommunications. And then we have the Big Horn contract shown in purple, which is the two-lane road, has the water sewer, drainage, and some recycled water. And then the sewer lift station project, that is in green. The green box on Bilby Road is the actual lift station location, and the green line is the force main. Before I move on to the next slide, I want to talk about the project overall. The project will serve the Laguna Ridge and Southeast Policy Area, and it will provide roadway and access to the future Southeast Policy Employment Area. It is a, it seems like this project would be an easy project, because it's a roadway project in the middle of Greenfield, but that, unfortunately, that was not the case. This was a complicated project for us, primarily due to the fact, the level of development that was in different levels of planning. And there had designs that were ongoing, they had some designs that were approved, they had permits that were in place, and the project required a lot of coordination with the developers to make sure that we weren't overlapping and, you know, make sure the coordination was good. We also coordinated with utilities, regulatory agencies, property owners. Just to give you an idea, on the right-of-way, for instance, we worked with 12 property owners. We did three relocations, all, that was all in about eight months. In addition, we have permits from the US Army Corps of Engineers and the Regional Water Quality Control Board for Bilby Road and Big Horn Boulevard. And so generally speaking, it's a fair, seems like an easy project, very complex. Moving on to budget, this is the budget on the left, the table showing the budget that was proposed in March of 2016, when the projects were added. At that point, I want to focus in on $34.1 million. That was a budget about a year ago. Now, with the bids opened, we're looking at $34.4. So we've got a $34 million project, and we're within 1% of the budget. So we're really happy with that. I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to Jonathan Mitchell. He was the project manager for both the roadway projects and the lift station. He's going to talk about the bid results for the roadway component, the reimbursement agreement that focuses on the sewer components in the roadway, as well as the lift station bid results.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Jonathan Mitchell with Public Works. Thank you, Kevin, and to the department with your, for your leadership in moving this project to where it is today. Before you now, is a summary of the bids for the roadway portion of the New Growth Area project. As you can see, there is significant interest from the construction community on this project. We received eight bids. They were all grouped near the engineer's estimate, with the lowest bid coming from DeSilva Gates Construction. Before you now, we're focusing on just the sewer elements of the New Growth Area roadway infrastructure project. The sewer elements will be reimbursed by the Sacramento Area Sewer District, SASD, and that item will go before the SASD Board of Directors on August 23rd. It is a discretionary item, and with that, there is some risk. However, we anticipate their approval on August 23rd. The estimated reimbursement amounts shown before you today will be adjusted based on placed quantities and also construction unit costs. We anticipate that those will be reduced slightly from what you see before you tonight. Shown before you now is a summary of the bids received for just the sewer lift station portion of the project. As you can see, the low bids came in significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. We did a review of the bids, a bid analysis, and we believe the primary reason for that is due to the high demand right now during this time in our economy for heavy infrastructure contractors. Through this period of time, that type of a construction is required for other types of construction, which is also in high demand, and as such, we think that that is the primary reason for the difference between the engineer's estimate and the bids received. As a distinction here, as shown, there's a reimbursement agreement for just the lift station, also reimbursed the construction amount from SASD. That went before their Board of Directors this morning, and it was approved. The distinction is that the portion of the sewer of the New Growth Area roadway project will go before, again, will go before the SASD Board of Directors on August 23rd. I'm going to hand this back over to Kevin Busey, who's going to go over some of the elements of project delivery. Thank you.
Okay. I want to wrap this up, but essentially, you know, we were on schedule. It was a complex project, usually to go through design, right-of-way permitting, it's a two-year process, we did it in 13 months. Budget, the budget was $34 million... Budget, the budget was thirty-four million, we're on thirty-four million or within one percent, so we've got a fairly complex project, we're on schedule, we're on budget, I think that's because we had a good team, we had, Jonathan Mitchell was the project manager at Wildon Engineering, did a great job, Doc and Engineering supported him, supported him on the roadway design, Wood Rogers did the lift station design, Inos did the real estate that we talked about earlier, got all those acquisitions in place, and then Hunting Environmental did the permitting. So with that, I'm going to leave you with the recommended actions, and we're ready for any questions you may have on these items. Questions?
I have a process question, are you going to ask about the specific items?
No, I'm going to, well, real quick, I just want to compliment you guys and the whole team for, for being on budget, and it is extremely difficult to do what you guys did, and when you mentioned coordination with developers, I'm sure when, if they're in plan phase of design, there's utility crossings that they probably anticipated that you were working with, and so anyway, I, I really, I really appreciate what the complexity of this project and the time you got it done, and, and the engineer's budget coming in, our engineer's estimate coming in, very close to the, to the bids. Maybe this is the process question you're getting at, I was just speaking to the reimbursement and agreement, and there is a, we're going to get an answer on whether or not if...
This, this probably has to do with, in the staff report, we talk about there's a level of risk, in that we're moving forward now, awarding a construction project and approving a reimbursement agreement, but SASD has not approved that reimbursement agreement.
Right.
So there is a level of risk that the SASD Board on August twenty-third could decide not to approve the reimbursement agreement. We don't anticipate that happening. This is, other, other projects have gone through this same process, where they've essentially awarded at risk, there is a small risk, I, I think we said that in the staff report, but I think we're confident that the SASD Board would approve the agreement, and so that's why we're recommending that the, that the construction contract for the roads be approved. Now, we did call De Silva Gates, the low bidder, and we asked them what would happen if we delayed the award to August twenty-third. Their bids are good for sixty days, so De Silva Gates can't change their bid. Basically, they said they'd be about thirty days later than what they would have anticipated. If you take a look at the three hundred and twenty working days, factor in some time for wet weather during two wet weather seasons.
Yeah.
We would anticipate probably finishing sometime around April of 2019. So you add thirty days of that, maybe it's May of 2019, somewhere in that, so you're not, so there's a small level of risk, but on the other side of it, there's not a tremendous loss either. I mean, you're, you're just going to finish about thirty days later than you would have normally.
Yeah. I'd say it might be a, a, a low level of, of, of chance and a high level of consequence, if you look at the millions of dollars that we would, that we would not be reimbursed for, which could equate to a low level of risk.
Councilmember?
Is that what you were going to ask?
No, no, I got a totally different question, but this now prompted a, a new question. So if you mentioned the August twenty-third meeting, what was on consent on today's?
Today was an amendment to the agreement, reimbursement agreement for the lift station.
Okay.
Look, because the lift station came in so much higher than the engineer's estimate, the reimbursement amounts in the original agreement were based on the three point eight, three point nine million dollar figure, we wanted a higher reimbursement amount. We negotiated with SASD to give us a higher reimbursement amount based on the actual bid, so I believe that's what went to the, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what went to the board this morning.
Correct.
How's that eight, is it eight million? Is it eight?
Uh, yeah, it was, it was about eight million.
Yeah, that's about right. And so is that related to item ten point six, that same station?
Yes, that, yes, so you've got a reimbursement agreement for the lift station that's already in place, and now we're asking, asking you to award the construction contract for the lift station.
Okay, so I think, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
On the roadside, what you have before you is not only the, awarding the construction contract, you also have the associated reimbursement agreement, and that has not been approved by SASD Board, they wanted us to approve it first. So we approve it tonight, they'll go and approve it on, at their August twenty-third meeting.
Wait a minute, so they actually want us to approve ahead of the reimbursement agreement, even though there's a risk of...
They wanted us, they wanted us to approve the reimbursement agreement first.
Oh, yeah.
So technically, so if we could do as recommended, if the council decided that to push off the construction award, I would recommend that we approve the reimbursement agreement. SASD Board would approve it the morning of August twenty-third, this would, and the construction contractor would come back to you on the evening of August twenty-third for approval. At that point, you would know that the SASD Board had approved the reimbursement agreement.
Right.
Yeah, I think that makes better sense, yeah.
Well, except you lose a month.
Lose a month.
Yeah, I would think that the mayor would probably agree with me, that given the fact that the amendment of eight million dollars was on the consent calendar, the likelihood of the board going against staff recommendation, because if they're saying, we approve it first, they'll bring it forward with a recommendation to approve. I, I don't see anything controversial about it.
Well, I hear you there, and before we continue on, I guess we got to go open for public comment first.
Now we get to my process question.
Okay, got it.
Do we have to open public comment and close public comment for each of the three items, or can we do that for one item and then make motions for all of them?
You can do it all at once, as long as we make it clear to the public we're opening for all, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, no additional questions. For the record, we are opening public comment for ten point five, ten point six, and ten point seven, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak on all three items. Want to close public comment and open up for council deliberation and direction.
Okay, so if I continue where we left off, I, what I was wrestling with is, while there's a low chance of it not getting approved, the consequence is, is high, right, the amount of money we stand to not be reimbursed for. On the other hand, we lose, you're right, we lose thirty days, but what does that mean? May nineteen instead of April nineteen, number one, and then let's say it's a little bit longer, let's say it goes into June nineteen. What are, what are we, we decided to, we wanted to get infrastructure down to our CIPA employment area, but I don't think that whether it happens in April, or May, or June, there's going to be a material effect on, you know, I mean, what's waiting for them down there, right? So that's why I, I'm leaning towards, let's just wait for a month, get, be assured that we will get reimbursed for this, and, you know, we run a little bit long, you know, I don't see how, what, how it's going to affect us materially on that backend. So that's, that's my thought.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I, to me, the, the, there's more of a downside than an upside by waiting, or the other way around. It's more of an upside by waiting, and the, and, and there's, there's nothing really, I mean, yeah, you lose a month, in the scope of a two-year project, it's a month, I'd rather wait. I mean, I, if you, if we can give you the approval, but hold off until...
I think, I think the city attorney would, would weigh in on that, because this is a legal issue.
So the city council is the one that approves awards of contracts, and so if you approve it tonight, then it, then it's approved, and it puts you at some risk if you don't go forward, and the reimbursement does not come into play, but if you look at the timing, if you're inclined to put it over, you don't really lose anything, because the SASD Board is going to hear this on the morning of the twenty-third, you will know then whether or not they approve it. I suspect they probably will, I agree with the council on that, we just don't know that, and then that evening, you will have the comfort level to say, okay, we go ahead and approve the award of the contract. So if you're not inclined to take action tonight, given the, the risk component, then you should put it over to the twenty-third of August and act upon it then.
Could, could we approve it pending the approval of the twenty-third?
You don't gain anything by doing that. There's a couple of issues with that. First of all, there's, once you, you can't really do kind of a conditional approval of these sorts of things, it's, it's generally not done, you either approve it or you don't, but even if you were inclined to do that, you don't gain anything, because it's coming back on the twenty-third anyways. And so to make a clean process, I would recommend against doing any kind of a conditional approval, just do a straight approval when you're ready, and if it's not tonight, that's okay, because you're coming back on the twenty-third anyways, and then we'll know for sure whether or not SASD approved the reimbursement agreement, they would do that in the morning.
That would be my preference.
Okay, continuance?
So I'll, I'll move the resolution, finding no further CIPA review for Big Horn and Billby Road extension projects.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll move...
Close, extension? No? Okay.
I'll move the resolution directing the use of the CFD funds in the reconciliation of the project and the preparation of a repayment plan.
Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension?
And then I will move to continue the award of the sewer pump, CIPA sewer pump station to the August twenty-third meeting.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that, so I think we did that, ten point five was the item you wanted to hold on, and ten point six was the item that you wanted to award. We want to award the lift station project.
You want to, you want to, you want to approve ten six and ten seven, and you want to hold over ten five?
Yeah, that was...
Ah, got them backwards.
Okay. Let's clarify that.
How can that be? We're getting reimbursed from the sanitation district for the roadway projects?
The roadway projects include trunk sewers, and the reimbursement agreement with SASD isn't for the roadway, it's for the trunk sewer, that's part of the roadway project.
All right, I apologize, in that case, I will rescind those motions, and I will move to continue item ten point five to the August twenty-third.
Got a motion to continue ten point five, got a second? Second? All in favor of continuing ten point five? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, extension?
So now, so now I'll move to adopt the resolution, finding no further CIPA review for the CIPA sewer pump station, authorizes the city manager to execute the contract, authorizing the engineer to approve change orders, and direct the SASD credits.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, extension? Close?
Move to adopt resolution, authorizing the city manager to execute reimbursement agreements with Sacramento area sewer district for the Big Horn Boulevard trunk sewer.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Extension? All right, last item.
That'll take us to item ten point eight, which is review nominations received for the key to the city event to be considered for August twenty-six, twenty seventeen.
Sorry to scare you there, Kevin. We've never seen somebody rush the podium that quick.
That was actually pretty good, I appreciate that.
That's what the auctioneering talent gets is fast.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Cara Reddick, deputy city manager, I'm here tonight to talk about the city's key to the city program. The program was created, created in two thousand and thirteen, it's an ongoing program, and applications are accepted year-round. To date, the city has awarded eight keys. The last key to Mr. Joey Hand has not been ceremonially provided to Mr. Hand due to scheduling conflicts to date. The nomination criteria for key to the city is an Elk Grove resident or entity with significant accomplishments in one or more of the following categories: professional or amateur sports, the entertainment industry, military service, public service, or humanitarian efforts, an Elk Grove resident reaching the age of one hundred years old, a person performing an act of heroism while in the city limits, or a dignitary or celebrity visiting the city of Elk Grove. In April, council requested a large-scale event regarding the key to the city, and in May and June, we solicited nominations. Those are listing of the places that we solicited nominations at, I will not read it. We received twenty-two nominations, the nominees are highlighted in yellow, and then their category is off to the right. And the recommended action is to review the nominations received for the key to the city program, select recipients in anticipation of a recognition event that is scheduled on August twenty-sixth at noon at the city's multicultural festival, and then you can also direct staff to send letters and/or certificates of recognition to individuals as an alternative to receiving a key. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
You know, Cara, I, I guess I'm a little bit conflicted with this, because obviously I was very involved in this coming forward in the original form, and then we added the Hall of Fame. So I think we really need to kind of revisit the parameters of the key to the city and the, and the Hall of Fame to maybe come up with some different criteria, how we, how we break that out, and I, I don't know if I'm comfortable reviewing any of this tonight until we have a chance to review the key to the city program relative to the Hall of Fame. And I don't know how anybody else feels, I, I'd rather rush through this, I mean, this is, this was meant to be a prestigious item, and I, and I, not that these people aren't very worth recognition, they all are, but I think it, it, we're kind of confusing maybe some different things, because we haven't adjusted since we added that Hall of Fame program.
Are there any other awards? I'm sorry, are there other awards as well, too, that we give, other than, because I know about the Hall of Fame, and I couldn't distinguish the difference between this and the other, other than the one hundred...
It's, it's a little bit different, but I think we probably should kind of look at both of them.
Yeah, we also have the mayor volunteer awards that we, that we hand out.
Okay, that's right.
But the, the Hall of Fame, it's my understanding that the Elk Grove Community Council.
Yeah.
It's going to be taking up the Hall of Fame program, so we can certainly reach out to them and check on the status of their program, and, and try to kind of delineate a little bit more on the criteria, because our program has been around since two thousand and thirteen, and they haven't quite had their first event yet, so maybe we could work with them to try to...
And maybe, maybe we need to look at all those, because, because they've kind of each come in separately in phases over time.
Right.
Right, you know, you had the mayor's award, key to the city, Hall of Fame, and, and look at all those so that we're not duplicating from one another and kind of set what the hierarchy and expectation is of those, if everybody's agreeable to that.
Yeah, and in my participation with the Hall of Fame, there's been a lot of confusion about that as well recently, you know, because we've gone on a pretty, you know, higher-profile campaign on the key to the city, and so there's a lot of overlap. The next event is scheduled for September, Cara, although I haven't spoken to them recently, so I'm assuming it's still on, and I do know some of these people were nominated for, for that Hall of Fame as well. So originally, for Councilman Wynn's information, we, we adopted, the council adopted the, the Hall of Fame, you know, to, in my opinion, it was, it was to recognize, well, a lot of the same stuff, I mean, to recognize citizens' contribution to our city in many different categories, but to highlight what an outstanding city and resident, or citizenry that, that we have. I, I did view the key personally as something a little bit more unique and, and, you know, so therefore, I, I think I, I agree with Councilman Detrick, we need to, I think we need to reconcile the two and, and figure out how, how we go forward, not taking anything away from these folks here, we're, you know, very deserving.
So is the Hall of Fame given by a different entity, a different group, not by the city?
Yeah, the city elected to, to not host it, well, actually, what we did was, we, well, what we did was, we gave it, and you guys, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, we gave it to the historical preservation and...
What happened was, we offered the event first to the Historical Preservation Society, and they, they didn't feel like they had the capacity to host it, and so the Elk Grove Community Council offered to take it on. You all have approved in your community services grant a five thousand dollar contribution to the Community Council for hosting the, the September twenty seventeen event.
I see, okay, so that does make it a little confusing, since it's...
To me, the Hall of Fame is more like the California...
California Hall of Fame, yeah.
Fame.
Right.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to...
Deliberating.
Oh.
Since there are no additional questions, let's open public comment, seeing that nobody has signed up to speak, let's close public comment, and let's continue to deliberate. Go ahead, Councilman Hume.
Yeah, so I agree with the comments that have been made so far, that we need to reconcile kind of what category meets which category, I think it is a different situation, since one is administered by the city and one is not, but I go back to the staff report, we directed staff to go out and do this, so that we could have kind of a, a larger scale event at the multicultural festival, to really kind of highlight not only this honor, but also the people being honored. So for me, when I read through the different nominations, it, it was, you know, I, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, that I were able to pick out as really sort of being at that level of accomplishment, that I think we called out when we established the, the initial criterion. So the first one would be Jamie Whitmore, Paralympic cyclist, Tacoma Gold in the Rio Paralympics, and she's a motivational speaker, we had a chance to ride with her at the Western
at the Western Festival Parade, I think she is just as worthy as, as the other sports figures that we've given it to. Terry Wolf and Donald Ralph, both generals in, in the military, one having been a presidential appointee. Carissa Crater-Trenchera, again, a, a disabled athlete who, very distinguished, I can't remember what award she got, but she was the number one out of twenty-five-hundred or something, excuse me, international athlete of the year out of two and a half million athletes. So I think that's pretty incredible, I'm going to butcher this. Matilda Mukantabana, who has been a professor at CRC and is the ambassador from Rwanda, not only to the United States, but to Mexico, Brazil, and Argentina, that seems pretty incredible to me. And then the last one is, and this one's a tough one, because I, it, it could be a Hall of Fame, it could be, I think he's every bit on the kind of par of Elizabeth Pinkerton, and that's Roy Herberger. The, the, go ahead.
Well, I, I had exactly the same list, with the exception of Matilda, which I totally appreciate as well, I was on the fence on that one, so, so as you're speaking, I mean, you know, it kind of made me think, we do need to reconcile these two programs, but like you said, we put staff forward on this, and actually, it wouldn't be fair to the people that prepared these applications, so we could still choose people tonight, and then we still need to go back and do our, do some homework. So I, I'm perfectly, they're exactly the same list, I'm perfectly good with, if we go that direction, I'm good with what you just proposed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, because those, those are, I chose a number, but those are the ones who rose to the top, so I would be supportive of that, but I would have an interest in bringing it back and discussing and clarifying according to the suggestions of the Vice Mayor, so that we have a clearer picture as to what is what and what are the, you know, criterias necessary for the different awards.
So do we just select one, or we can have as many?
Well, we can have as many, but, you know, the other thing is, the only city program here is the Key to the City, so when I say reconcile, I think we just needed to figure out what, what we want to do for the Key to the City, and then let the rest, you know, the, the Community Council can do their own thing.
Right, I, I mean, because it's not being given by the city, the Hall of Fame, they're two different things, there's nothing wrong with somebody receiving a key to the city and being, you know, a Hall of Fame, and then maybe receiving an award for another group or organization, but, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, there are great people, and I, I had a hard time picking and choosing which ones to receive it as well, too. I just want to be cognizant that we don't want to start giving out, because it's a, it's a year-round program, is my understanding, is that, and we're hoping to do this forever, and so we don't want to give out so many keys that it's going to get to the point where...
Well, I think, I think it's as, as they come up.
Yeah, it's not...
We're, we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up because of history.
Yeah.
I mean, one person who's not on here, wasn't nominated, is Bill Cartwright.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, I, I'm, I'm okay with the same six, I had, I had five out of those six is, and, and there were none that I, everybody else I didn't have on, I only had five, so I'm okay with that, if, if we want to go with that. Do you have, do you have those six, Kara?
Yeah, I have the six, so of the six, I think four of them are current residents, two of them live out of state, so we'll reach out to them to see if they're available to come to the ceremony in August, and then we'll take a look at, we'll reach out to the, the Elk Grove Community Council and talk to them about the Hall of Fame program, and try to, you know, come back with a staff report in the future about the Key to the City, kind of what their plans are, and also, you know, revisit our mayor volunteer awards, so we can look at them comprehensively.
And just to kind of circle back with what Councilman, this is what we directed you to do, and, and to be honest with you, there's a couple people that I wasn't even aware of that are really, really good, the two generals, so I mean, there's no way we would have known that if we didn't do this public outreach, so I, I think it was, lack of better words, a good exercise of, to find out who's out there and keep these options open as we move forward.
Would you like to send anything to the other individuals that were nominated, a letter or a certificate?
Absolutely.
For their consideration?
Like an honorable mention, you know, I mean, thank you for your good work, yeah, absolutely.
You know, and I, I, this is completely off-topic, but I was just reading a, a resolution that the Chico City Council passed when my grandfather passed away, he was the city manager up there from nineteen twenty-nine till nineteen forty-nine, and this was a typed-out resolution on like legal pad that, you know, where the each sentence is numbered, and then it had the city seal at the back and the signature of the mayor and the clerk, and, you know, it was not a big deal at all, but gosh, it's been saved now for forty years. So I would think that maybe we need to come up with something else, unless, kind of, just to...
Actually have one of those in my office, because I received that when I left the city of Durham, so we could certainly look into, you know, some, you know, a resolution like that, and it would be on the, you know, on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be full-blown pomp and circumstance, but that doesn't mean it's not impactful to the person receiving it.
Because that, I mean, that was the routine in Durham, is that it was on administrative consent.
Well, we're already given the approval, why would you need to have, come back on the consent?
Come back, yeah.
No, you're, no, I'm just saying in the future.
Oh, in the future?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you meant for this list.
Yes, sir. I'm just giving you a, a procedure.
A thought did occur, yeah, Councilman Hume, that you, when you mentioned that, why couldn't resolutions be generated for these individuals? I mean, would that be too impactful with the city clerk's office, or thoughts?
You mean for these?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that's what we're giving direction to.
Right, if, if that's, you know, at least a city resolution, you know, with all of our signatures.
Not a resolution, I'd say a...
Something along those lines, right?
Certificate.
Certificate, resolution.
Certificate of appreciation, which is...